Welcome everyone to our February 3rd workshop. We're going to begin with our executive session. So can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive section.
Court of order, Madam Chair, can you call roll please?
Sure. Basin?
Here.
Camson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Okay. Can I hear a motion to go into executive session, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed executive session.
Thank you. And seconded by Ms. Smith. Ms. Tanner, could you please read the motion?
Yes ma'am. Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to section 1 of the above cited code section. The subject of this session is the discussion and evaluation of the superintendent's performance, B consultation with legal counsel, and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion is consultation and briefing as necessary regarding the matter set out in section A of this motion. Basin?
I.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
I.
Jordan?
Aye.
Camson? Smith?
Yes.
Aye.
Martin? Clanton?
Aye.
Aye.
Gabriel? Thank you.
Aye.
Jordan? Okay.
Aye.
Smith? So now we'll begin our work session portion of this meeting. So I duly call this meeting to order. Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
All right, I'll see you soon.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
All right, can I get a motion to come out of closed session, please? Oh, yes.
I'd like to ask that we amend the agenda to move item 5.02 to after item 6.02, making it item 6.03.
Madam Chair, I move that we exit closed session.
Thank you. In a second?
Second to that motion.
Thanks, Ms. Basin. Ms. Tanner, please read the resolution and call the question. Okay, just a moment. I want to have Ms. Tanner call the roll before we take, we make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes. Basin?
Here.
Camson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Okay, guys have it. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move. Well, first I want to welcome everyone here. I know we've just gotten right down to business. I hope everyone's doing well on this fine Wednesday evening. Oops. So the screen just went blank. Okay. Let's move to, why don't have the agenda in front of me? So let's go to the first item on the agenda. The comprehensive annual financial report? That's what's up? Okay, Dr. Birdsong, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the school board, and members of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some very brief updates to you this afternoon. As the administration continues to monitor health conditions and metrics related to COVID-19 cases in our local community, as well as the division's readiness to implement key mitigation strategies to ensure that we remain prepared to implement the FASE plan for returning to in-person instruction, it is also critical that we remain focused on the virtual learning experiences of our students and teachers thus far. While many of our students are thriving with virtual learning, we recognize that overall this non-traditional learning environment has taken a period of adjustment for our students, families, and educators. Therefore, securing feedback from these specific individuals regarding experiences with virtual learning is critical to ensuring equity and excellence for all, even during the most difficult circumstances. Following a presentation on the financial audit conducted by Clifton Larson Allen LLP, our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. James Poehl will begin the administration's presentation with a review of the results from the virtual learning survey in efforts to strengthen our students' virtual learning experiences. Next, Dr. Poehl will then share the feedback received from families and staff related to the recent survey conducted regarding the 2021-2022 academic calendar, and we just talked about a change with that per Mrs. Basin's amendment. And in addition to reviewing the learning experiences of our students in this virtual environment, we recognize the impacts that this pandemic has also had on their social emotional well-being. Dr. Poehl and our Chief Schools Officer, Dr. Linnell Gibson, will provide a review or an overview of the division-level social emotional learning work that is taking place along with some voices from the field to add a firsthand account of these efforts. And certainly, Dr. Moore, our Senior Director of Student Wellness, will be participating in this overview as well. Then finally, you will hear an update on the vaccination process, which I know is long awaited. With the city of Norfolk moving into Tier 1B of its vaccination phases this week, K-12 employees who elect to do so are now eligible to receive the vaccine that's available as a part of the three-day event facilitated by the Norfolk Department of Public Health. Our employees who participated in the vaccination survey that was disseminated in January have now received information on how to participate in this vaccination event. Communications and FAQs have also been shared district-wide to ensure that employees have the information necessary to successfully participate in this process. We hope that you find this presentation or all of the presentations to be timely and relevant to your discussions today. Thank you, Madam Chair Martin, Mr. Vice Chairman Jordan, and members of the board. This concludes my remarks for this afternoon. I will now turn it over to Mr. Jenkins, our Chief Finance Officer, to introduce our colleagues from Clifton Larson Allen LLP to begin our first presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good evening Chairman, Chairman Martin, Chair, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the school board, and Dr. Birdsong. Greg Busink and Aris Coleman, both certified public accountants from the firm Clifton Larson Allen, have joined us. They were in charge of the fiscal 2020 audit of our financial reports, and will speak to you about the audit and conclusions they reached. Before they speak, I wish to thank you for feedback regarding several organizational items we need to update. We are making corrections to printed versions and for posting to the website. Since your meetings are held virtually, we have not printed copies for you yet. However, if you, we are happy to send a paper copy to each of you unless you prefer an electronic version. Please let either Ms. Tanner or me know what is your preference. I'm glad to answer any questions you may have, or if you prefer, Mr. Basink and Ms. Coleman will be happy to speak with you about their audit.
All right, all right. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Aris Coleman. I'm a director with CLA. I've had the pleasure of presenting to the CAFR to you in prior years, and I want to introduce the Principal on the Engagement, Greg Busink.
Hey, good evening, everybody.
We can hear you. Great. So we're not going to take up too much of your time. As part of the audit process, we did meet with Dr. Birdsong and the Audit Committee, kind of going to more detail about the audit. And so what we prepared tonight is really a high-level overview of some required communications that we must make with the board, as well as as part of the audit process, and then the results of the audit. So when you, when you look at our audit and you look at the CAFR, you have 153 pages there. As I go through this process, I will kind of explain what we do, realize that 153 pages, I believe, three of them belong to CLA, our firm. The other 150 really is a great work done by Stephen Jenkins, and he had Sandra Gaskin, as well as Stan Hobbs, who will join the team later to help him put this together. I'm sure there's other members of the finance team and payroll and other individuals and budget who were a part of this undertaking, but those individuals are the ones that we worked with and kind of got all the information compiled so we could actually audit it, and they could be presented to the city and time for the city to issue their CAFR, and then as well as what we're presenting today to you. So I just want to thank the finance team and just everyone because with just some organizational changes, then you guys had some other things that, that just environmental and his cares and his COVID, this was a perfect storm, but you had a great team that was able to kind of assess what, what needed to be done, get all the right pieces together, and move forward. So we want to thank them for that as well. So our debates approach, we do a risk-based approach, and what is risk-based is we're not under the standards, we're not required to, to audit every dollar that's in the CAFR. We basically look at key items, we look at controls, internal controls around certain processes, we look at dollar value, of course, that, that drives a big part of what we do. And then we, you see us talking to individuals about how items are administered, who has access to what, and we kind of put these together and determine what is the significant areas that we need to, to audit, and where if there is going to be an issue or concern of material misstatement, where would it be? And that's what we call a risk-based approach. And our audit opinion kind of echoes that same thing. It doesn't say that we've audited every dollar. It said that, you know, there's no material misstatements. It's based on reasonable, reasonable test, testing that we've done over those transactions. So it's part of the audit process, along with the, the auditors working with finance. We also do, I have IT specialists from CLA, and they are talking to the IT folks at the schools and kind of taking a overview of the systems that, the financial systems that you're using to compile the financial statements. And what, what that is, is the information that you're getting is highly leveraged from the financial systems that are being used to, for your general ledger, as well as other information, and we want to make sure that information is accurate and reliable for us to rely on. So getting to the good part, the CAFR that you see in front of you is actually, we've given it an unmodified opinion, and what unmodified means is the highest level of assurance that an auditor is allowed to give on the financials. We do not say anything that there are no problems, there are no misstatements. We say that materially, the financials represent the financial position of the schools as of June 30 of 2020. We also issue a report on internal controls over the financial reporting, and this report is required by government auditing standards, and what this report had asked the auditor is, the underlying controls that are related to the financial information, is that good to assure that there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies with the number there presented in the financial statements? That letter was issued this year, and there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. There rose to the level of being presented to, in that letter, related to the financial statements.
Can I point out one thing? Just the last few slides I've seen flashing on the screen, that's the GFOA Certificate of Excellence and the ASBO Certificate of Excellence in financial reporting. Those two things are kind of the gold standard in governmental financial reporting that the school system has received. These are always a year and a year. So for this year's financial statements, they've been submitted, so the awards will be given out usually in the spring. But so these are for last year, so these for the 2019 CAFR. I did want to comment just that these are a result of the hard work of everyone. For the GFOA certificate, I believe 2019 was the 14th year in a row that you received that, and ASBO, I don't have the number of years in a row on that, but both of these show a lot of work that went into, to prepare these financial statements, to get them to the standard that these two organizations require. It's just, it just shows the commitment that you have to financial reporting. I want to point that out.
Yes, it does. So next, just want to talk about the single audit, and the single audit is an audit of the federal expenditures that are administered by the school system. Generally, the, these, audit of these programs is not presented within the school financial statements, but it's presented in a comprehensive schedule of a federal warrant that's presented with the city's federal expenditures as well. Due to the CARES funding and the delay and the CARE supplement by the federal, federal government, the city has not issued their single audit. This was allowed under, for the state of Virginia, as well as for the federal agency, Office of Management and Budget. So the schools are, their, their single audit is part of that process. However, what we can tell you is that we did look at Title I. Title I was selected as one of the programs. As of this time, there are no compliance findings to report. We have completed testing, but until the report and everything is final, we still say everything is preliminary, just to make sure that nothing comes up later. But there were no, there's nothing to report at this meeting in regards to the Title I program. Next, I wanted to talk briefly about the school activity funds. As in prior years, we are, we have did some testing related to school activity funds. We have given draft comments to the school. All the testing has been completed, and where, after we issued the CAFR, we basically circle back to issue the, the report for the student activity funds. This year, our audit was based, was risk-based, which means that we sent questionnaires to every school as regarding their processes, but we only selected some schools to do detailed revenue expense testing, and that was based on a risk assessment that's done by the school system. As part of their ongoing process, you have Ms. Edna and her team that are constantly working with the schools, and what they did was went through and decided, based on risk, what schools should, should be reviewed this year in more detail than just a questionnaire. All right, so next item, some required communications that we must, must make as part of the audit. I want to state that the audit was, is conducted in accordance with generally accounting auditing standards. You'll hear I say GAAP a lot. They also were in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. We say GAAP. For the qualitative aspects of the audit, I mentioned there was 153 pages of the CAFR. We have three. Once you get past the financial statements, you'll see an area comes, it says notes. And in those there, significant accounting policies. It's note one of the, for the financials, and that's a good place to look at, just to get a good overview of different lines, how different line items are, impact the financial statements. I always tell anyone, if you want to read a CAFR, it's an easy way to go to sleep, but if you want to learn something, the management discussion analysis, which give you a comparative overview from year to year, how the school's financial activities has changed from 2019 to 2020, and then your note one, which is your accounting principles and practices, what gives you a good idea of each individual line item and how it is related to the financial statements. So when we go through the audits, as I mentioned before, there may be items that, that we see, that we may suggest for correction. There are some items that management may say, okay, we're not going to correct them, and it's based on materiality is how we present them as far as if they're going to affect, materially affect the financial statements. So for the audit, I just want to say that Stephen and his team did a lot with just kind of, we won't say cleaning up, but kind of streamlining a lot of the general ledger information for the, in the, in the accounting system. And as part of that, you know, they did some, some reorganizing of some information, and also just kind of cleaning up some items that were immaterial, but just make the information more readable to the, to the users. So as we go through this process, we did have some, there were uncorrected mistake, misstatements, and when we say uncorrected was, we went through and we noted that these items, they rose to a level of what we call a pass adjustment, meaning they were mature enough to say to management, you guys want to probably take a look at this, you may want to see, you know, what was the underlying reason. However, they do not materially affect your financial numbers, and your numbers are materially correct. And what that was, as far as the pass adjustment, we had a few from 2019 CAFR related to your grant, your capital projects, and your government activity funds, and that was in the area of the accounts payable. It was a couple of vendor invoices that came in late, and the school system decided not to record that liability. Again, it was immaterial. For fiscal year 20, when the final school activity fund ledger was presented, the amount was different than what was presented in the, the financial statements. Again, it was immaterial, and the school system decided to go ahead and pass on that item. And the last one was the, the ending balance for the grant fund. The grant, the fund was out of balance by a small amount, and it was immaterial, but in the year, your fund should equal to zero. So again, that was item that we brought up to management, and we'll make recommendations for them to get that in balance for, for 2021.
Yeah, what's important to note about those is just they don't rise to a significant level that affects our opinion, and we do discuss it with management, and they, they agreed that did have impact on the statement, so we were fine with passing on this. They're all, they're all fairly common that we see in other, similar organizations.
And then I also want to mention that we had a couple of corrective misstatements. They were not material, but I, we wanted to bring them to levels of management. As I mentioned, that the finance team went through and streamlined some of the financial information, and what we noted was, as this process was occurring, there were some prior year adjustments that were for fiscal year 19 that we're seeing were not recorded in the actual general ledger in a timely manner. So therefore, when you, you move on from one fiscal year to the next, your numbers should flow pretty easily, and we had some small adjustments that we need to make in order for those numbers to move forward from year to year. So lastly, there were no significant disagreements with management. There were no other issues besides the ones that we spoke about today that we say were immaterial, and that any information that about audited financials were not presented in any other document that we need to, to review or express an opinion on. So now, Greg, have you wanted to go over just the upcoming GASB pronouncements?
Sure. There's, there's a a couple new GASB pronouncements that are coming online that will impact the schools over the next couple of years. One is related to fiduciary funds. It's GASB number 84, related to fiduciary activities. The impact that it will have on the schools, and it's still being evaluated, is that the student activity funds, based on how they're designed, and it's still being evaluated, but there may be a requirement for them to be included within the financial statements of the school board, rather than presented as a fiduciary fund, so basically being considered separate. So if they did roll in, they may be considered a fund of the school board. So that impact should be assessed, but management's aware of that, and we're working with them and evaluating that and see what the impact's going to be. And then there's another standard coming online that's related to leases, and this has been talked about for a while. It's going on in the commercial world, and the governmental world, and the international world. But basically, it's a requirement, if you ever took accounting in college, you learned the difference between an operating lease and a capital lease, and effectively the governments, the standard centers are taking a more conservative position to present most leases as capital leases now. So there'll be a change, could be a change based on the number of operating leases that you have, but you may see that change affecting future years' financial statements as well. And again, it's a big discussion in industry. Management's aware of it, considering it, and we will work with them on, during the next year or two, to work on the new standards and make sure that everyone's up to speed, and there's no surprises in what the reporting is going to be. So those are the two hot topics in GASB pronouncements. If you want to wow your friends, you could talk about those. But pretty much that's everything I think we wanted to cover tonight as far as our presentation goes. I want to thank Aris Coleman, who's our Director on the Engagement, for all her hard work and our team, and certainly want to thank everyone at the schools this year. It was a challenging year just with, you know, if something's going to happen, I guess it all happens in the same year. So we, you guys had a cyber incident. We got this pandemic that is slowly going away. Hopefully, it goes soon, and then some changeover in key positions as well. So again, just thank everyone for their help and hard work and patience this year, and we got through it, and looking forward to next year. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman and Mr. Busink. We appreciate you going, taking us through this, this document and all of your hard work to prepare for today. Are there any questions? None? I don't see any hands. Okay, Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, my, my question isn't so much on the financial piece of it. It's on one of the appendices, I guess, on page 98, I believe it is, that shows the, I think that's the correct page. Yep, 98 shows the free and reduced lunch price eligibility data. In that, in that, on that table, does this reflect the, the actual data, or I know, I think it's with that CES program that sometimes it may skew some of the, the numbers, so I didn't know if, from the, from the administration side, if anybody could speak to the reading of that table.
Mr. Jordan, I'll, I'll try to answer that question. Those should be, that should be the data from last year for fiscal 2020 that, that you're seeing on that, on that particular report. That's, that's part of the supplemental information that's required. So it should be based on So it should be based on last year's number, the averages from last year.
Right. But you know, sometimes, and you can get back with me later because I know I've asked this often with the nutrition department. But I know sometimes with the, I think it's called the CES program, that the way that gets reported sometimes gives the impression that an entire school may have a free lunch or free and reduced lunch when it's not necessarily reflective of the actual data for the for the school itself. So I just wanted to make sure that in reading this table, if it says that a school is 96% free, that indeed that is actually what the student data is and is not a reflection of how we may report certain things to the state based upon funding we receive.
I believe it's, and I'm just reading here, it should be totals from the October, from October of 2019. I will certainly verify that and and let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On this, do you have a comment or question?
Thank you, Dr. Martin. And thank you, Ms. Coleman and Mr. Bussink. So I have a question. So can you tell me, what is the threshold that defines what is immaterial, immaterial or material? Is there a specific threshold?
It's got a quantitative and a qualitative aspect to it. When we go through our calculations, it's based on opinion units. So we look at the opinion units for your your CAFR, your Conference of Major Financial Report. It's based on each major fund. And then also when the government wide financial statements altogether. So we have a calculation for each different opinion units. So we look at the major funds. So as we're going through the calculations, I can't share the exact number with you, but it's kind of an industry standard calculation that we go through. So we go through and we come up with a number of an overall plain materiality number. Then we have performance materiality number, which is a number that we've reduced down. But essentially, when we look at materiality, we're looking for the the overall, the definition kind of goes about what would impact the decisions of the users of the financial statements. So as we go through and look at that, as we come up with our overall materiality, materiality numbers, then we take a percentage of that. It's usually between five or 10% of that overall number and then use that to drive what we consider rises to the level where we need to bring it to management's attention. And then when we look at those cumulatively for the engagement, we compare that to our plain materiality numbers that we started with and see how those look. So when we looked at the adjustments that we found, they were very insignificant compared to the overall numbers that we would consider to be material. Discusses with management, they agreed, felt the same. Because for the most part, they were cleanup type entries to get things just to the point they were clear. And again, they rose to that level. We just needed to discuss them with them. We we scheduled them, we talked to them with management and we decide and agree basically that they're not material. But really, we're considering how it would impact the decision maker.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Just want to commend the administration on, again, having a successful audit as Ms. Ari, Ms. Coleman, I'm sorry, stated. The opinion that we're receiving, it is actually the best that we can get. Also, Dr. Martin, I would like if Dr. Birdsong is agreeable a two by two. I have some questions, but I think my questions are more internal to us that would help me understand some things a little better than I currently do as opposed to using the time in this meeting to discuss those things.
We can certainly arrange for that, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions pertaining to our financial audit? All right. Thank you so much. And yes, good job, administration.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
Um, okay, moving on to our next item. We have 5.01 under Academic Affairs Virtual Learning Survey Results and Efforts to Strengthen Students' Virtual Learning Experiences. Dr. Birdsong?
Good evening again, Dr. Martin and members of the board. Dr. Paul is going to lead this discussion. I know we've had lots of conversations amongst the governance team and with our community about how virtual learning is going for our children. And so Dr. Paul will be able to provide some data to that, to to data to you regarding that matter. So without further ado, Dr. Paul. And we also have a voice from the field and we know how much you enjoy that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the board and Dr. Birdsong. I have with me this afternoon, Dr. Cataldo and Mr. Severio to present the winter survey data as well as how the division has been responding to this data. This afternoon, we'll review the parent guardian data, the teacher data, then have a response to the data as well as a voice from the field. And slide three, please, Ms. Tanner. There we go. Thank you. The winter survey was opened on December 14 and remained open until January 2. There were a total of 4,065 responses for the parent guardian survey. That was 2,365 from the elementary level, 674 from the middle level and 1,026 from high school. And please note, this is about 1,700 fewer responses than we had in the initial fall survey. This slide represents responses from the fall and the winter survey in regards to parents and guardians feelings on how online instruction is going for their child. The data goes across the screen from left to right to represent strongly agree to strongly disagree. The six bars in each area represent left to right. Green is high school results from the fall. Light blue is high school results from the winter. Yellow is middle school results from the fall and dark green represents middle school results from the winter. While dark blue represents elementary school results from the fall and brown is elementary results from the winter. And this will be consistent on all of the slides. As you can see in this data, the majority still agree or strongly agree. However, the percentages have decreased since the fall with growth in the disagree and strongly disagree ranges. This slide shows the response data around beliefs that students are receiving the support and instructions to complete assigned work. As with the fall, a majority of responses fall in the strongly agree and agree category. With secondary schools, there was a decrease in these areas and an increase in the disagree groups. Elementary saw an increase in strongly agree as well as strongly disagree. Similar to the data in the fall, more secondary responses fell in the area, the agree responses than with the elementary. However, secondary schools saw growth in the disagree areas for the winter survey, while elementary saw a slight decrease on the ability of students to complete assignments with little to no help from parents. Responses for secondary saw declines in the agree responses for adjusting virtual learning. Elementary saw a degree, a decrease in the agree response with a slight gain in the strongly agree and strongly disagree responses. This slide shows the responses across elementary school. These rates include responses from all levels and are consistent with responses from other surveys conducted across the vision. And this slide shows the secondary response rate. For the instructional survey data with teachers, there were a total of 963 responses for the winter teacher survey, which was 270 fewer than the fall survey. This slide shows there was a large increase in strongly agree and a minor increase in strongly disagree, showing a shift left with the data at all levels to support from administrators with engaging students. There was also a larger increase in the strongly agree response area for students having the necessary technology needed for virtual learning. There was a slight increase in disagree for high schools and a slight increase in strongly disagree for middle schools. There was also a leftward shift in the data toward strongly agree response for how teachers feel virtual learning has progressed. As anticipated, there was a major leftward shift in the response to teachers having enough planning time and preparation time due to the addition of asynchronous Wednesdays since the fall survey. These are a few additional questions that were added to the winter survey for teachers. As seen here, 85% of our teachers have participated in a Wednesday PD session. 59% yield pacing has been adjusted appropriately. And 87% have been able to collaborate with colleagues to plan for more meaningful instruction. This slide shows the overall percentage of students at all levels that teachers perceive to be logging into class daily from 10% on the left to 100% on the right. This is the data for just elementary. And the next slide is the data for just middle school. And then one more slide is the data for just high school. All right, next slide. In response to the fall data and with planning for the winter data, the curriculum teams invited teachers of all levels to participate and give feedback on the enhanced pacing guides created for the second quarter. For the third quarter guides, more feedback was sought to ensure pacing was on target for where the majority of teachers were and to ensure that all VDOE standards would be covered prior to the end of the school year. Additionally, to engage students, school counselors have been reaching out to students and parents on a regular schedule to keep families connected to the school. Also, principals have been sharing best practices on student engagement and engaging parents and guardians with student learning. Teachers have been conducting individual SEL check-ins with students on Wednesdays. And as of today, there have been over 8,000 participants in various Wednesday PD sessions. Specifically, nearly 2,700 have participated in sessions focused on student engagement. Over 3,500 have engaged in sessions on Zoom, Canvas or another online learning tool. Second semester sessions have a deeper focus on feedback to students to support their learning. The winter survey had an open response for requested professional development for teachers to complete as well, which has been shared with the curriculum instruction as well as the instructional technology teams. And sessions are being created and offered on Wednesdays to meet their needs. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cataldo to continue on with the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Good afternoon, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, members of the board and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here this afternoon to continue the presentation and focus on our response to data. Training has been a big focus as our response. The instructional technology resource teachers are providing professional development training in multiple areas on our asynchronous Wednesdays. They are training on Canvas, focusing on the assignment scheduling features, Zoom and the many features to support student engagement as well as content delivery. Teachers that are eager for more tools are also being trained on Flipgrid, which you'll get example of that tonight. Gizmos, Jamboard and other technology engagement tools. When not providing division professional development on Wednesdays, the ITRTs are providing professional development in their schools based on specific school needs and staff surveys. When looking at the survey data regarding student technology needs, needs as stated earlier, there was an increase in strongly agree response area for students having the necessary technology needed for virtual learning. There was also a slight increase in disagree for high school and middle school students. Reaching out to the schools, we found the main areas of concern were connectivity and weak signal on student MiFi's, student training needs as well as students having problems logging in. It was also suggested that students are given headphones if they have multiple siblings in the home. To address the technical support needs, we have revamped our call center. We have started a Zoom phone call process for when students or parents need support. The support call not only goes to the help desk, but also goes to the ITRT and or the network engineer of the building. In the past, we've had about two to three people dedicated to the help desk and now we have over 60. This eliminates the longer call wait times that we had experienced at the beginning of the school year. This also assists students with logging in issues. Generally, after a long weekend or break, there's always a larger number of students that forget their passwords. Happened last year during long breaks, students would forget their locker combinations. So it's akin to that. To address the training needs, the ITRTs have also increased the number of training videos and documents for students, parents, as well as for teachers to provide support. We also had our first student professional development session about two weeks ago and another session with over 200 students earlier today. We provided training on organizational tools found in Canvas and overall tips for handling the online learning environment, staying organized and not stressing. ITRTs have also been assigned to every curriculum and instruction department. The Department of School Leadership, the Department of Learning Support, Department of Professional Development. They assist with the reading and math specialists and their training as well and various other departments in need to assist them with any kind of technology support needed. Another area of focus has been on the creation of multiple committees with many stakeholders, teachers, administrators, specialists, directors, parents, students to address the many changing needs in the division during these interesting and uncertain times. We have focused on concurrent instruction support with the development of videos on how to best teach in that environment. The Virtual Scholars Academy and how it's going to look for next school year, along with committees on how to best use Canvas and Zoom in our division. And finally, our department works specifically with our teachers in not only training, but also in modeling and coaching. The ITRTs introduce new approaches or reinforce current practice and then slowly hand it off to the teacher and then remain online to provide that support. This includes my portion of the presentation. At this time, I would like to introduce one of our current instructional technology resource teachers, Mr. Michael Severio, as a voice from the field. He will now share how he supports Norfolk Public Schools. Mr. Severio?
Thank you so much, Dr. Cataldo. Thank you, Dr. Paul. Thank you, Dr. Birdsong, virtual air, virtual hug, Dr. Birdsong. Good evening, board members. As Dr. Cataldo just stated, my name is Michael Severio and I'm here this evening to present to you all the hard work that the ITRT team is putting forth to support Norfolk Public School staff, students and community. As an ITRT that supports our district, this includes training, modeling lessons, researching new technology tools and integrating the technology to connect, to help teachers connect the content that they are teaching to their students. In a moment, I'm going to describe this slide to you. But I want you to know, this is just my perspective of what I am doing with my specific schools that I support. But the team as a whole is is passionate about what we are doing. And this is just a small example of the hard work that we are putting forth. So in this particular slide, what you are looking at is an activity that I conducted with a third grade teacher at James Monroe Elementary School. And this teacher and I collaborated by supporting the students with the entire writing process, starting from brainstorming a topic to publishing this in a digital book. And then it's something, you know, we go through that writing process. That's something we always miss is that publishing aspect. So this tool that we used is very powerful to our students. And not only does this tool enhance instruction, but it also allows students to create a final product and increase that relevancy to the content that they are learning. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. And this is what I'm excited about this one. So part of the job as an ITRT is to find these new and engaging technology tools for our students to utilize during instruction. And one of my all time favorites is is Flipgrid. And this tool is a video based program that allows our students to record these short videos to demonstrate their proficiency in a certain topic or a certain skill. So this is going to be me. You're going to see a brief video here of just me going through it so you guys can see how it works. And then when it stops counting down, you're going to say, my name is Mr. Severio. My favorite food is pizza. My favorite color is green. And when you are done, you're going to press the red. Yes, that's it. Besides having to hear myself, it's a little embarrassing. But besides that, right, the students love this because this is relevant to them. This engages them with the content. But they can also add those stickers and filters that you're seeing, those little frames that are going around their videos. And then once, the best part is, once these videos are complete, they're directly shared with the teachers and their peers to receive that immediate feedback that is so necessary in our virtual, in our virtual world. So this allows teachers to assess their students on understanding topics and skills. And it's like an alternative method of assessing them. It's fantastic. Next slide when you're ready. Thank you. Okay. And in this slide, what you're looking at is what Dr. Cataldo was referring to earlier about us starting to collaborate more so with our four core content areas. earlier about us starting to collaborate more so with our four core content areas. So although our teachers and students are our main area of support, this transition into virtual learning has expanded what our training needs require. And currently, working with those four core content areas, so our English Language Arts, our Science, our Math and History Departments, we are working together and collaborating to develop these Canvas resources for our new learning management system that can be shared with our teachers and our students. And here are just a few snapshots of what we have currently developed in all four of those areas. And these resources are then, after they're created, they're then shared out by the four core coordinators. And then in the background, the ITRTs continue to provide that ongoing support to the teachers with these resources. And as with other training resources that we provide, they're always updated to fit the needs of both our teachers and our students. Next slide when you're ready. Thank you. And additionally, to continue our ongoing support with this new Canvas world that we're in, and along with other technologies that we're utilizing on a daily basis, we are providing those Wednesday synchronous trainings for our teachers. But additionally, in addition to that, we are also developing a committee of ITRTs. And this is actually, this already happened. And this committee of ITRTs is developing instructional videos for our ITRT YouTube channel. And this YouTube channel then provides that ongoing asynchronous support that both teachers and additional staff need to engage with these new tools that they are using. So these resources, both the videos and training guides that we've developed, are continuously going through revisions to ensure our trainings are up to date and relevant to our teacher and student needs. Yes, so again, just in addition to providing our teachers with training, this is definitely a collaborative process. So in this virtual world, we're also working very closely, again, training-wise, with our content specialists across the district. So in a moment, this is a brief video on a training that was conducted with a reading specialist on a program called Smart Learning Suite. If it doesn't play, I'll just reenact it for everyone. I'm pretty good, I promise. It is okay, Ms. Tanner. I think it's going to be okay. I promise. Here we go. I'm going to reenact. I just got to get some, I got to call somebody. Just give me like 45 minutes to call them, to get them here. But in the video, if it would have played, there was, at the very beginning, there was a reading specialist. Oh, here we go. I got a faith. Here we go.
Let's say, this is what I did. Because I've been teaching kindergarten, I have my group, okay? And now I send the other kids in the waiting room. While they're in the waiting room, they're doing smart learning activity. If I don't leave it on student-led, they're only going to be able to do that first activity. So I have to leave it on students so they can go, if I have like three different things, like maybe it's a matching, maybe it's a sorting activity. If I don't have it on student, they can't get to the next activity. And that was something I had to learn.
Yeah, so I'm trying to give you a visual here. So in Ms. Bolden's case, she was using it as like an early finisher or an independent task. So up here, you'd click on the silhouettes, and you would want that to be student-led because you would want the kids, like if we had, we have the two slides here for this activity, we want the kids to independently go between both of them without waiting for us, right? So if they're in the waiting room, or if, you know, maybe it's like a review of something and it's independent, and want the kids to have complete control, autonomy of moving back and forth, I'd want to click the silhouettes, make sure it's student, and then they can flip between the slides as much as they want to. Now, if you're doing like a whole group activity as like an anticipatory set or a closure, and you want to have full control as the teacher, like you want the students to provide answers or responses, and you want to have control over what's being said, what's being typed, what's being annotated, you'd want to keep it teacher-paced.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. And so besides listening to myself again and also noticing that I'm wearing the same blazer I'm wearing right now, which is embarrassing again. But beside that, I'd like to point out at the beginning how Ms. Bolden, who was the reading specialist at the beginning of that video, you heard her voice. This new transition into virtual instructions really opened my eyes. And I can, you know, say for my team too, that this is a really collaborative process that occurs between ITRT and the staff involved in the training. And, you know, I've said it to a lot of my colleagues, I said it to Dr. Cataldo, that prior to the pandemic, you know, the ITRTs were considered the experts in instructional technology. But as we continue moving forward, our teachers and our content specialists are stepping up to the plate, and they are going to become those experts too. And it becomes this collaborative process of training where it's not just this discussion of, here's how the tool works. It's how does it work for your kids and how does it work for your school? Additionally, in that video, you saw that Smart Learning Suite program, and that was another method that teachers can use to assess their students. We talked about those alternative assessment needs that we have. On the current slide that you're viewing, a new major component that we have to our position is now working directly with families to ensure that their children are able to attend these virtual classes. And here's just one, again, of many examples that happen in the background of how we support the community. As Dr. Cataldo stated earlier, the ITRTs are now using the same exact ticket system that the network engineers use to troubleshoot technical issues. And this new process allows us to receive a ticket on what support is needed and then track the state of the issue. And then we can then reach out to the parent or the guardian or the family to then provide them with direct support to access Zoom sessions or Canvas content. Okay, and then lastly, in addition to the new ticket system that we are now involved in, many of us are providing our families with synchronous training opportunities, so live training opportunities. And these opportunities allow our families to learn more about the tools that their children are using throughout the virtual school day. And again, just two examples of the many different that are occurring in our district and in our department. And just to conclude, the ITRT team is working incredibly hard to provide ongoing support to our Norfolk Public School staff and family. And I appreciate your time and dedication to Norfolk Public Schools. And I will now turn it back over to Dr. Cataldo. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Severio. Nice job. Thank you for sharing with us to support you provide Norfolk Public Schools and really for being our voice from the field this afternoon and showing us all that you do. As you can see, Mr. Severio has a lot of energy and a lot of passion for what he does. And our ITRTs are just very passionate for, you know, where we are right now and in this current time where everything is online, they have been stepping up to the plate. So at this time, the presentation has concluded, and we are ready for any questions.
Thank you. I do want to echo that. It's really amazing to look back at where we started and where we've come with all of this technology and how dynamic it has, you know, evolved into for the students. It's not just a Zoom meeting. It's so much more. And I think it really allows to try, you know, of course stimulate in different ways the academic experience. And so I congratulate you all on your efforts in bringing us to this moment. And I look forward to what we're going to see in the future. I did see some hands up. Any questions or comments? Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I too want to thank Mr. Severio and Dr. Cataldo for your presentation today. And again, thank you to all of the ITRTs. I know they are all working very, very hard. I do have some questions regarding the data. If we could go specifically around student engagement. One of the things that I would like a better understanding of is how the engagement data also correlates with chronic absenteeism. And then also, if you could speak to a little more about, you know, I know we haven't yet received it, but if there is data available showing, you know, the number of students that are maybe failing, especially at the secondary level, two or more classes, and how both of those items, chronic absenteeism and the failure rates, compare to previous school years? Is there any available data on that that we could review? Or could you speak to that a little bit about how that correlates with some of this engagement data?
I think that would be a tough ask on this specific dataset to compare it with, since we have just, you know, 970, you know, teachers that responded. And this is their feeling of the, and how the students are actually logging in. Doesn't necessarily constitute whether or not they were absent or not because a student, even if they don't log in, they may still be making connections and submitting work. We just felt it was important in this data to see, you know, where the logging in is so that we can go back and also work school by school with a breakdown to see, okay, where do we have more login concerns so that we can help boost that sense of engagement and work with those schools directly? And that's why we put in this report, so you can see that we are collecting and looking at that data.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that comment. That is something that, you know, I would like for us to explore further. Because as you said, you know, I think what would be meaningful for us as a board is to really understand the absenteeism and the failure rates because that really, in my opinion, you know, tells us how our students are doing in the virtual environment. Logging on is one thing, but being absent for classes and not performing well is another thing. And that's something that I would like a better understanding of and would like to receive data on. Okay. Is there, I guess, can you speak to that? I mean, I'm sure we've examined the failure, you know, the failure rates. Are we seeing an increase from previous years? I mean, what?
We have been examining, I just don't have that data in front of me, Ms. Bassin, to share to be 100% accurate on. So I'd rather not share it at a board meeting without having the data to present.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I did ask for it last time. I did let, you know, gave a heads up that I was going to be asking about that, but thank you.
Mr. Jordan, and then Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you. Again, I also enjoyed the presentation, especially the ITRTs. I know how hard they work and have been working hard for years. I guess generally, first of all, I support the comments that Ms. Bassin made. But also wanted to go back and see if I can get a better qualitative picture of what's being described. I know during the narrative, there are numbers that are mentioned. It would be helpful, I think it would be helpful to the board if we could see those numbers as well. So for example, I think I heard you say that, Dr. Paul, that there were 1,700 fewer responses on this survey than a previous survey. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Jordan. So in the fall survey we did in October, there were 1,700 more responses. There were about, there were 5765 on that one that was reported to the board in October or November, I think.
Yeah, thank you. Something similar was said about the teacher response as well. Any insight as to what may have resulted in that? Was it the holiday timeframe of the survey? Or anything else that it may be telling us as it relates to the difference in the numbers and the responses?
I think it would be difficult to infer, I think possibly the holiday. But we also made sure that we left the survey open even longer, so if they remembered over the holiday to do it as well. But we did send a couple reminders out too and kept it active on Facebook through the window.
So in the sense that we had, and forgive me, I was just writing notes, about 4,065 parents respond. That's similar to a household survey, right? So it's a individual parent would be responding to the children in their household, not necessarily two parents responding to per student. Is that correct?
So it would be the 4,065 responses. It could be one parent who responded to three children, so that one parent would count as three responses. So that was responses per child because the parent had the opportunity to fill it out once and then to say, yes, I have another child, and to fill it out again. So we're counting the responses as how many children really they're responding for.
Oh, so the 4,065 represents how many children that they're responding for, not necessarily how many parents were responding?
Correct.
Okay. So then, as you look at that, how does that reflect then the overall response rate based upon the number of children in the division? Do we have a goal of something that we meet the goal? Does this represent 20%, 25% of the students? What's your sense of the 4,065 and what that shows us in terms of overall response rate?
So I think with a total of around just shy of 27,000 students, you know, we're looking at roughly about 20% response rate, which I think, you know, for certain surveys, we're still on point for what we get on other survey data. We'd of course love to have more parents respond, absolutely, to give a stronger sense of data. I think we have enough of a response to get a feel for overall across the division, you know, a response to these questions, a feel for where we need to make sure that we're strengthening our instructional practice.
Okay, and then on Slide 8, where it shows the elementary response rate by school?
Yes, sir.
That, can you just explain that chart to me again? So that is, if there are X number of children at a school, then the percent is what the parents responded that represents the number of children or percent of children in that school. Is that correct?
Not quite. So this is the, so if you look at this survey or this Slide 8, Sewell's Point, for instance, had a response rate of 1.9%. So 1.9% of the responses were from Sewell's Point. It doesn't mean 1.9% of Sewell's Point responded. It's one, so we get a feeling for how much was each school weighted into the survey from the responses. And these are also, both Slide 8 and 9 are connected. It was just, if I put them all on one slide, of course, it was hard to read. So I tried to just separate it out the best I could, so it was still legible.
So on quick glance, then, when I look at that, some of the...
Daddy's making...
Dr. Martin, you need to mute. Some of the lower response rate to me seem to kind of mirror what we were seeing earlier in terms of, well, a couple of things. One, student engagement, as Ms. Bassin was mentioning, but also areas where we may typically see challenges with digital access and usage. Do you have any sense of that as you look at it from some of the schools that have lower response rates in comparison to others?
So, you know, I think based on the data, one, you know, we really wanted to break this down because I know it was a request previously to see it broken down like this. But I think the feeling we get, again, is being able to pull this data and share it directly with principals to say, you know, here's where your response rate was, and here's where it isn't, in the responses that are coming in, so that we can try to drive up some response rates so that we can see visually where we aren't getting responses and try to push for higher responses in the future.
Okay, and then my last question is, on the teacher responses, the 963 out of total teachers, do you have that broken down by school as well?
I do not at this point, but I can break that down, and I apologize for not having it broken down.
Yeah, I just would be curious to see whether or not, as you look at the different response rates, if there's some connectivity that we see there as far as the teacher responses, as well as the other responses that we receive. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Paul?
Yes, I just want to say that I support the ask that Ms. Bassin has for the information such as attendance, along with the achievement piece of it. I think that will give us even more insight on what's taking place in a virtual environment. And as you mentioned, Dr. Paul, just looking at the numbers, there, for some schools, quite a few, they're kind of low to really be able to draw some type of conclusion with a high level of confidence that what's being reported... what's being reported is truly the norm. So the numbers are saying one thing to me. I'm hearing something different from the field or community. And I'm not saying one is right, the other is wrong, but I think that there's something somewhere more in the middle that will give us a better pulse of what's really taking place.
Absolutely.
Let me show my, okay, thanks, Ms. Smith. What I'm asking is for Mr. Seem to mail the request to me and we can go from there. Ms. Basine, go ahead. And then Mr. Jordan.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Martin. I would really like to hear as well, Dr. Paul or Dr. Birdsong, you know, if there's anything specific, you know, from this presentation that you know, that you would like the board to to know or understand in terms of any future decision making as it as it relates to strengthening virtual learning? Or, you know, even for our toward our, you know, return to in-person learning, is there anything, you know, that we may not have touched on that you would like for us to to know so that we can better support you?
Basically, the bottom line is we we need you to have a good understanding that, and I think Adele Martin said it at the beginning, we've come a long way with our virtual learning platform. We started out off with with nothing and look where we are today. And the key to our success has been the professional development provided to our teachers. Because the classroom is where the rubber meets the road. And at the end of the day, our children are depending on our teachers to provide daily effective, engaging instruction. And I our teachers, I am confident are doing that on a daily basis. So the more that we can pour into our teachers, the better the instruction will be for our students. So that would be the major takeaway.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Basine, please take your hand down.
Yeah.
Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. And and thanks to the the staff for pulling this together. I was literally sitting over here with my calculator, kind of pulling numbers together, and that's why I was looking to the other side. But I like to share with my colleagues the respect that Monday I was getting some maintenance done on my car and just so happened I had my mask on and the person who was working on me, she says, you look familiar to me. And I asked her, I said, well, I mean, you live in Norfolk? And she said, yes. I said, well, I'm I'm on the school board. She says, that's where I remember you from. She says, my son attends Norview High School. And I said, oh, great. And she says, he's here with me at work every day. He comes in and he's in the break room. And she says, but I want you to know, she says, I'm so happy about the virtual learning. She says, he went from making Cs and Ds last year to now he's making As and Bs. And she says, I like this whole virtual learning experience, and I'm so glad I have this opportunity to share this with you. And I wanted to share that with my colleagues in that respect because of what I'm looking at with these numbers. And I understand what Mr. Jordan's saying, and and I very much like to see some additional data down there. But from what's being presented here today, I only see in one area in high school where there's about a four percent shift downward. But overall, everyone else has said that, and I think it goes to what Dr. Birdsong is saying, is that we've done a good job in shifting how we're implementing virtual learning, that people becoming more and more pleased with it. It is not the end all, and I've said this before, that honestly, I think that going forward, as we begin to start looking outside of when we get out of this pandemic, that we're gonna, that this is something that's gonna stay. It's gonna be something that should be offered in another way to continue to find and meet students where they are and providing learning experiences for them. So I just want to say thank you, continue. I know that it is, we, it was kind of thrown on us. And we had to find our way. But I think that, you know, we are hearing different things, but the one thing that I'm hearing in the respect from a lot of parents is that for some who are experiencing this, they are experiencing a great deal of more more focus and they're doing better. But I think that in the bigger picture, as the board continues to talk about strategic planning and all these other things, that virtual learning is truly something that's going to stay. And finally, I also like to point to the fact, and I know that, you know, we talked about the less number of teachers, but we made some strategic votes and decisions of things that you all as administration brought to us with the asynchronous Wednesdays and giving teachers more professional development. And that was a clear shift that we saw where teachers felt that they disagreed in the earlier part in the fall on certain items. But when it came to on the winter time, there was a drastic shift where there was a much more positive response from our teachers. So I like to see more positive responses, and I think we're doing that. We're not going to meet everybody. But as long as I think what it really shows is that we are making some differences. And when we dig down into the data more, and I agree with Ms. Basine and my other colleagues, to kind of really uncover more things, because that's, we're just scratching the surface, but there are other things that we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton. Okay, Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Um, I I have to support what Mr. Clanton said, and I I do agree with some of the comments that were mentioned by my colleagues. I appreciate the check-ins by Dr. Birdsong and her team in the administration. I think it's it's open, it's transparent, it's telling us when we have asked her to survey our parents, our families, our teachers, so that we can assess the progress, or if there isn't progress being made, and she's sharing that data with us. And I do 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 know that there have been many decisions made, changed, altered to respond to concerns from parents and teachers. And I think that there is still more yet to be done, and I do appreciate whether we have nine hundred surveys or seventeen hundred surveys. I'm I'm just happy with the fact that we're sharing the data, we're able to talk about it. We can think about requests that board members have, that they're thinking about other options, further in-depth analysis that they want to do. But at this point in time, I'm, I am just pleased that we are able to get this information and make course adjustments as needed. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Ms. Basine?
Thank you. Since we're talking about virtual learning, I was wondering, I know there was a survey that was conducted to determine how many more families or which families would like to remain in the Virtual Scholars Academy, or how many would like to opt in for the second semester. You may not be ready to to share that information, but I was just wondering if you if you do have that information, if you could share it, if you saw an increase in the number of families that want to participate in the VSA.
No, we have not. And and certainly, we don't want to administer multiple surveys at at once because our families experience survey fatigue. And so we've already had a discussion about what questions we would like to pose to our families about VSA. We've had conversations about that. And we do do believe probably within the next month or so, we will administer that survey so we can start. Not that we haven't started planning, but planning a more robust program next year in that area.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I should clarify. I believe there there wasn't there a survey out, because I I thought I already that was for families for second semester. I'm sorry if I said next year, I meant for the spring semester.
Can we table that?
Well, we can table that.
We have that presentation. Yeah, that that we'll get that presentation at a later date. Thank you. Appreciate your patience with that. And yeah, any other questions or comments at this time? Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you very much. So we've adjusted the schedule. Moving on to social item six point oh one, which is social emotional learning update and voices from the field. We'll be leaving that.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Dr. Moore, our senior director of student wellness, will be leading this presentation. Dr. Moore.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Martin and Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the board and Dr. Birdsong. I am Dennis Moore, Senior Director of Student Wellness, and I am here tonight with Dr. Glenda Walter, Senior Director of Learning Support, and Dr. Sharon Phillips, who is the proud principal of Tidewater Park Elementary School. As a part of an overview, this afternoon, we will be providing an overview of the division-level social emotional learning work, how that connects to specific division-wide work being utilized with our students with disabilities, and finishing up with our voice from the field on how consistent S E L practices are being used to support students. When we look at the impacts of trauma on student school performance, the the COVID nineteen pandemic that the community has been impacted by is problematic for families, students, and educators. A primary challenge is balancing the safety needs of the community and families with the mental health and academic needs of the students that we serve. The impacts of the pandemic have changed our lives over the past year, and we must pay attention to the needs presented by students. The trauma experienced by some children during the pandemic can have a serious impact on their behaviors and achievement. Problems may include difficulties with concentration, memory, organizational abilities, academic performance, classroom behaviors, and the ability to form relationships with peers and teachers. When you look at common responses to high to high stress of trauma, and pandemic is a is a form of trauma, this slide illustrates the wide variety of responses that may arise as students experience trauma. Areas of impact can include emotional, cognitive, behavioral, physical, spiritual, and societal effects. The impacts of trauma differ from person to person, so it's a it's an individualized thing. Factors such as resilience of the individual, their biochemical makeup, and the support that they receive can influence how individuals respond. The nature of the trauma, the period of time that the trauma was experienced, and the intensity of the trauma also influence how individuals respond. A focus on trauma-informed care and social emotional learning can help students mitigate the impacts of trauma. The Cassell Organization, a leader in the S E L field, describes social emotional learning as the process through which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. While we may not always be able to eliminate all sources of trauma, we can help students learn the skills needed to work through their academic, behavioral, mental health, and social emotional challenges that may result as that may arise as the result to being exposed by trauma. Next slide. The neck, the competencies associated with social emotional learning include self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. Promotion of S E L includes the intentional teaching of skills and strategies to help students develop these competencies. I wanted to talk a little bit about V T S S. That's a program that Norfolk Public Schools is working with with the state to implement in in the school district. The Virginia Tiered Systems of Support is the model promoted by the V D O E and is increasingly being implemented in Norfolk Public Schools. The Division is in the second year of a planned five-year process to fully implement V T S S with fidelity. In the model, systems, data, and practices are examined to determine the specific needs of schools in the school district and the programs and practices that are currently in place to meet those needs. Under the umbrella of V T S S, are strategies associated with positive behavior interventions and supports and response to intervention programs. So it's like a V T S S is the big umbrella, and R T I, P B I S are underneath that. Next slide. Next slide. In a comprehensive program to address students' social emotional needs, a primary objective is to integrate trauma-sensitive practice into the school and intentionally teach and model social emotional learning competencies. The Positive Behavior Interventions and Support Framework can be used as a method to scaffold various school programs and initiatives initiatives to facilitate a comprehensive school program that addresses the needs of all students. So it could be a tiered a tiered approach. So some children may need a lot of intervention and support while some may not. Trauma-informed care and social emotional learning professional development is an ongoing priority to help ensure that all students have a common understanding of how to interact with and support students. The district is currently developing training modules that will help all staff members understand trauma-informed care and social emotional learning. A goal is to change the hearts and minds of all staff members so that they're better prepared to address the wide variety of needs that students present with at school. We want to help teachers understand why changes need to be made and help them to stay committed to facilitating those changes. Next slide. A wide variety of strategies driven by all school staff members are needed to move this mission forward. All employee groups are needed to be involved because interactions, all interactions with students matter. Students typically respond best to instruction and guidance when they feel that they are cared for. Relationships matter as they form the foundation of the work that gets done. Everyone, including division administrators, M P S mental health workers, teacher and support staff members, need to be rowing in the same direction to get the results that we need for our students. In order to support students across the district, the following actions are taking place. We're doing ongoing reviews and development of policies and practices that address trauma and trauma-informed care. That's a lot of that work is getting done by the V T S, working in executive committee and the and the P B I S teams. We're developing practices that promote mental health supports for students, promoting fair and equitable interactions between all stakeholders. I mean, that could be in issues of such like discipline, things like that. We're developing collaborative relationships with community mental health partners. And we're providing store student, excuse me, we're providing support to students and staff members in times of crisis. So even during the pandemic, we have had a couple of instances where crises have happened in families and and we still address them, even if people are virtual. We provide support through counselors and psychologists and social workers. That's that's an ongoing, even even during the pandemic, and virtual instruction. As stated before, and this is something I think is real important, everyone needs to be on board for school communities develop to develop positive cultures and climates that support student growth and wellness. Students interact with a wide variety of people during the day, and each interaction is important. It's not just teachers, counselors, and administrators that make a difference. Bus drivers, custodians, food service workers, and office staff members can also impact a child's life in a positive manner. All staff members need professional development to understand the basics of trauma-informed care and social emotional learnings as we address children with a variety of needs. A variety of employee groups and committees across the district are working on the development of an M P S social emotional learning plan. That's in in development currently. Among those groups are the executive and working, executive and working groups of the V T S S Committee, the District V T S S Champion, the District P B I S Administrator, our state partners with V T S S and P B I S, their trainers, they're working with the Division, individual P B I S committees at schools, the Trauma-Informed Care S E L Committee that's been working since the summer on on various issues. Of course, psychologists, social workers, school counselors, they're all addressing the needs of of students on a daily basis. The Student Support Services, I mean, they do a lot of work and have with C P S and suicide awareness and those kinds of things. The Student Wellness Department, which a lot of some of this stuff falls under that umbrella, behavior specialists, school nurses, there's a C's initiative going on through special education that's been very helpful. And and their and their use of the rethink program, which we're looking at implementing more widely across the district. And last but not least, the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, who are helping us as we as we start to develop these plans and and get more focused on specific things that we can incorporate into classrooms, curriculum and instruction are helping us to do that. And at this point, I wanted to thank you. This concludes my section of the presentation. I will now turn it over to Dr. Glenda Walter, the Senior Director for the Department of Learning Support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Moore. Good evening, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Dr. Birdsong, and school board members. I am Dr. Glenda Walter, and I have the privilege of leading as the Senior Director for Learning Support Special Ed Services. Rethink Ed, an evidence-based, technology-rich resource, is available to all special education teachers and students in Norfolk, as well as students that are participating in the comprehensive coordinated early intervention services referred to as C. Specifically, we've made the skills resources, which supports I P development, progress monitoring, and instructional tools to teach targeted skills, both academic and behavioral, as well as the social emotional learning resources available. The S E L resources are a castle aligned and promote well-being, connectedness, and success for students and adults. Learning Support has been partnering with Rethink to provide training and support towards full implementation of both rethink platforms across all P K twelve special education teachers and students. To date, our implement act implementation, excuse me, activities either held or planned include introducing rethink Ed include introducing Rethink Ed program to district-wide program classrooms or our more self-contained classrooms, as well as our elementary inclusion teachers, introducing Rethink Ed, our secondary inclusion teachers, developing a cohort of ongoing training and support for elementary teachers of students with emotional disabilities served in our district-wide program classrooms, and an introductory training for paraprofessionals. Next slide, please. Rethink offers professional development for teachers via on-demand video modules. These resources also promote, promote adult social, emotional, and mental well-being, empowers educators to teach social-emotional learning effectively, and the Castle-Aligned SEL modules linked to the Rethink Ed SEL curriculum. The Rethink Ed SEL student curriculum offers Castle-Aligned lessons across grades K through 12 for students needing Tier One and Tier Two supports. There's also a separate grade-banded curriculum for students requiring more intensive or Tier Three supports. There are flexible learning options that assist with student engagement and focus with five, 10, and 20-minute lesson and activity options. All the resources a teacher needs to effectively deliver social-emotional learning instruction is already developed and provided by Rethink to include lesson plans, lesson videos, visuals, and materials, and all of it is designed to support the teacher in being able to teach virtually as well. Here are just a few examples of lesson materials and visuals that Rethink makes available in the SEL platform that can be pulled and used by teachers in conjunction with the Rethink-provided detailed lesson plans. Instructional resources can also be used in isolation or as a part of teacher-created lesson plans. We have found that our teachers are using the instructional resources and materials more than any other aspect of the platform to assist in their teaching of SEL. Instructional resources are varied based on developmental level, skill focus, and teaching needs. On this slide, you see an example of a stress self-assessment that teachers might use with the older students that is also suitable for adult self-reflection. You also see another stress self-reflection tool to be used with younger students or scaffolded for those who need more assistance, and can also be used to guide a student and teacher conference session. And finally, you see a visual for steps or strategies that will be taught on the topic of managing stress. Additionally, Rethink does a wonderful job of providing materials to support homeschool connections, including letters to share with families about concepts being taught and strategies to reinforce skills and competencies at home. All of these resources are also available in Spanish. In addition to the teaching and instructional resources, the skills portion of Rethink provides excellent data collection and monitoring tools to monitor student progress, update IEPs as needed in collaboration with families, and adjust instructional strategies. We continue to phase in special education teacher groups for full implementation, but we reached out for feedback and personal experiences of teachers who had an opportunity to truly dive into the resource. Ms. Jennifer West at Little Creek has shared a number of benefits of the data collection capability to include the ability to customize goals to match the needs of the student, so it's highly individualized. The ability to enter data in real time as the students are demonstrating skills taught or engaging in target behaviors. It's easy to use and collaborate with professional, paraprofessionals to also collect data. The ability to enter data in a variety of ways to include things like collecting frequency, nation, data, or time between incidents. It helps to easily identify student patterns and triggers in order to provide appropriate support and instruction. It also has the ability to take data on multiple students quickly on multiple goals in a single lesson. So as a result, Ms. West has shared that she's able to take data in almost every group and instructional session that she teaches. Ms. Erica Cobb at Soul's Point has shared that especially during the extended closure, Rethink has been useful in creating interactive lessons for social skills, and she appreciates that the SEL lessons have been helpful in scaffolding her teaching and addressing social skills needs based on students' varying needs. She's utilized Rethink lessons to teach emotion and problem-solving lessons, asking for help or advocating for yourself lessons, lessons to assist students with focusing on what they like about themselves, self-confidence and self-perception, following directions, and empathy, to name just a few. Each skill includes a video to start, discussion questions, and typically two activities, as well as PowerPoint presentations already made, and a variety of options for formative, formatively assessing the students during the lesson. Rethink is very responsive to division, school, and individual teacher needs or requests. So during the COVID-19 pandemic, they've created lessons and activities to assist students navigating these uncertain times. And Ms. Cobb has used the social stories to help explain to students what is currently happening and how they can stay safe. As to the Student Learning Center activities noted on this slide, Ms. Cobb describes that they are presented as gaming activities to meet the interests of so many of our students who are completely grown up in the internet and video game age. Students can complete games focused on IEP goals and social skills that are targeted. Additionally, Dr. Regina Morleno, a teacher at Booker T. Washington High School, has shared that she thinks Rethink is a remarkable resource and asset to all teachers, but especially to the learning support teachers, and hopes that we continue to make it available because it is extremely useful for the SEL platform and behavior charting. She has used it to work in groups for SEL lessons and appreciates the ability to assign activities for each student based on their level of functioning, and the students can go in independently and complete activities that she has selected for them. All right. Rethink makes a variety of resources available for families and parents of students receiving special education or RC services and can register for an account. Ms. Kira Wilson and Ms. Deborah Burgess, two of our fantastic SEES paraprofessionals, use the platform to assist students with using the mindfulness tools and learning how to handle certain situations. On asynchronous Wednesdays, they've been setting up a Rethink Talk Zoom session where students can come in and have regular, everyday conversations about things they are experiencing and cover an SEL lesson. Where students unable to make it or log in, they schedule a phone call to review the lessons, and they encourage parents to join the lessons or use the resources because they believe the tools are useful for adults, and Rethink has designed them for that purpose. At this point, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Sharon Phillips, Principal of Tidewater Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, and School Board Members. Again, I'm Sharon Phillips, Principal at Tidewater Park Elementary School. We have been an integral part of the St. Paul's Quadrant Transformation Project as it relates to support for our children and families. Our school day begins with social, emotional lessons to address our children's mental health and to build a sense of belonging. We use evidence-based programs such as dojo, SEL lessons, vocabulary lessons, and lessons developed by our school guidance counselor. Our behavior specialist also assists students with developing social, emotional learning skills to effectively, I'm sorry, implement pro-social behaviors such as self-regulation, conflict resolution, and problem solving. She teaches these skills by engaging students in games, fun exercises, and videos. Our behavior specialist assists teachers by creating behavior plans and by offering behavior interventions to help students socialize appropriately, practice impulse control, and other coping skills, adhere to rules and expectations, and successfully engage in the learning process. She communicates daily with families to help find ways to support our children. faculty, administration, and staff conduct home visits to ensure children and families receive electronic devices, school supplies, and up-to-date information about their IEPs. Teachers mail appreciation letters and gift cards to students who have excellent Zoom classroom participation and to students who upload their reading logs. Teachers call parents to let them know when students have submitted an incomplete assignment and require the children to log back onto Zoom to complete the assignment with them, even if it is six o'clock in the evening. Our boys and girls are offered after-hours help and Saturday Zoom sessions. Special education teachers have compiled and distributed accommodation bags that include calculators, multiplication charts, one-hundred charts, fraction strips, counters, grid paper, rulers, and templates of place-value charts. Families have the teachers' personal cellphone numbers, Google phone numbers, class dojo, and email addresses to make contact and to submit assignments. Our office staff eagerly and willingly serve as a listening ear as our parents are frustrated with the mounting responsibilities of moving, working, or not working, and virtual learning. Many families need to come to the school to make copies, to fax information, and to request assistance to provide paperwork to various organizations when applying for their new homes, new school, and new jobs. With permission from Central Administration, desks and chairs were provided to our students to create a learning space at home. The boys and girls were elated by this. On Tuesdays and Thursdays of each week, our school media specialist takes a bookmobile to the neighborhood. She allows the families to retrieve books, pajamas, supplies, gift cards, stuffed animals, coats, classwork given to her by teachers, supplies, amongst many other things. Our faithful and dedicated community partner, Crossroads Church of Norfolk, sends volunteers to assist her in the community. Various churches in the quadrant have supported Tidewater Park during this time. Crossroads Church, again alongside Pastor Kevin Trumper, walked the Tidewater Gardens neighborhood, asking families and community members to pray with them. Crossroads Church provided an after-school Bible class with parent permission. The class was well-attended. Coats were donated by Crossroads Church and were delivered to our children in the neighborhood who live in Tidewater Gardens, Young Terrace, as well as those who are in shelters at this time. Grace Bible Church donated gifts for our students and bags of side dishes to accompany the ham or turkey voucher that they donated to families and that they donate annually at Tidewater Park School. Dr. Kim Jesse and the Bridge Network of Churches donated $2,950 in Walmart gift cards and stuffed animals to our children and families. Dr. Kirk Houston and members of the Gethsemane Community Fellowship Baptist Church Norfolk has faithfully supported the Tidewater Gardens community and Tidewater Park School in various ways since 1998, most recently through mentoring. Book bags, complete with supplies, were donated by Bishop Kim Brown and the Mount. A kindness closet filled with lotion, deodorant, tissues, socks, underwear, toothpaste, toothbrushes is organized and funded by the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Students retreat, retrieve these items as needed. As a result of our partnership with National Counseling Group, many of our children who were previously enrolled in the therapeutic day treatment, therapeutic day treatment program at Tidewater Park School continue to receive wraparound services. Our children and families are provided intensive in-home counseling and counseling via telehealth. Weekly outpatient therapy, individual therapy, family therapy, and monthly group sessions are provided to our families who are enrolled via Hope Psychotherapy Services LLC and the National Counseling Group. Keisha Hinton, a Communities and, Communities and School Representative, has worked to secure tutors for students, made home visits, provided school supplies, clothing assistance, adopted families for the holiday, opened a virtual school bus for classwork help, and supplied PPE equipment like masks, gloves, and hand sanitizer. Chip of Southampton Roads donated brand-new desks with the instructions on how to assemble them to support learning at home as well. Project Life's Journey donated 30 distant support boxes that contained stress balls, headphones, empowerment cards that give our children daily affirmation about self-esteem, relaxation, and their feelings. That box also included a plethora of books about African-Americans. In conclusion, the real heroes are our children who unmute themselves to read aloud and can barely be heard because of the background noise. They persist despite life circumstances to include the COVID-19 pandemic. Thanks for taking the time to listen to Tidewater Park's journey, and at this time, I yield the floor for questions and discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. I mean, I don't, it's hard to really find the words to say what an extraordinary network of, of community, you know, caregivers and all of the institutions, the, the faith-based groups and just really supporting these children during these times when they're facing so, you know, so many different obstacles and, as we all have, but these children are, you know, it's just really just an amazing story. I mean, the stories went on and on and, and from the bottom of my heart, I just thank everyone for getting involved in, in, in that, in Tidewater Elementary School or Tetterer Park Elementary School or any of our schools. We, we truly appreciate all of, all of the organizations and the people who give, and I know there are many of them, and we, we need to celebrate them.
Yes, we do. Dr. Martin, thank you. And you're exactly right when you say it's not just Tidewater Park. If you work in Norfolk Public Schools, compassion is at the top of the list, and I'm in constant contact with colleagues throughout the district and realize that what I shared with you just now about Tidewater Park goes on at all of our schools, from Maury High School to Norview High School, from Camp Allen Elementary School to PB Young Elementary School, all the way to Booker T. Washington High School. Norfolk is a city of leaders and teachers who are very compassionate and caring pre-COVID, and I know that it has continued throughout COVID, and it will be our post-COVID behavior.
Yeah, it should, yeah. I mean, as we say, we're very fortunate to live in a community as tight-knit as we are, and, and it's just, it's a perfect example. So thank you.
I agree.
So I'd like to go ahead and open the floor for any questions or comments. Dr. Gabriel and Mr. Clanton.
Dr. Phillips, thank you so much for sharing all of the wonderful things that are happening at Tidewater Park Elementary and the amazing partnerships that you have developed over the years. We, you are definitely tapping all your resources on behalf of the children, and we say thank you for that. As a board, since we're in a work session right now, we, we have so many topics that we are discussing, but we're also looking forward to the future. We're looking at budget, we're looking at policy, we're looking at ways we can help you do the job that you are doing each and every day to make a difference for the children. Speaking to us, what are some things that we can do as a board to support you, to support Dr. Birdsong, so that you can continue to reach your children? We just heard a survey about student engagement, teacher engagement. What can we be doing as a board to help you and maximize all of the good things that you were doing at Tidewater Park Elementary?
Good question. As a board, I, I would just say that if you continue to support the decisions made by Dr. Birdsong and her staff as it relates to providing professional development and including our community partners in the relationship and in, in the education of our boys and girls, we'll, we'll do just fine. But we'll take the community and you supporting the decisions that she makes based upon education and her experience here in Norfolk Public Schools for close to 30 years. It will do just fine.
Good answer. All right. Next, I have Mr. Clanton.
Oh, no, I was just giving.
Okay, sorry.
Hand clap. Great job. Thank you for being an example.
All right.
You don't have any words, Mr. Clanton.
You, you said it all. I said, great job. You know, you continue to be an example of, of what it really means to, to incorporate the community using all aspects, faith-based, and, and even our Greek letters, sororities and fraternities. I know you called that out.
I had to do that for Dr. Birdsong.
I, I, I heard, I heard.
And I'll be honest with you, that's just a summation. There are so many other partners, and I hated to call names, but I did need to mention those people who have been truly, truly by our side for so long. But there are people who reach out to our schools all the time who want to contribute and give back in so many ways to our boys and girls. And so I think during this time, as I've spoken with my colleagues, we've had to tap into those resources because truly, you know, it gives, you know, some definition to the fact that we, it takes a village.
Definitely. And I know with our new Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, I'm quite sure that Dr. Birdsong and as we're beginning with the strategic planning process, will continue that communication moving forward because as you did explain, post-COVID and the pandemic as to how we'll begin to strengthen a lot of those partnerships and how, because there are people who ask all the time, how can we support? How can we get engaged? So thank you for showing some ways. So thank you for showing some ways that people can do that as we start to look and be creative is create, open up the mind of creativity as to how other individuals can engage with us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaseen, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I too want to thank Dr. Phillips for being here today, for sharing your story from Tidewater Park Elementary. I also want to commend the administration for working toward a comprehensive social and emotional learning plan rooted in evidence-based techniques. I'm really excited to hear that and look forward to the continued work around that. I do have some, I have several questions. And really, you know, getting to the heart of, you know, how are our children doing? Like, how are our students doing? Do we have any data that would help to inform the board on, you know, some of the behavioral and mental health challenges our students may be facing? For instance, are we monitoring data in terms of how many students have been referred? Or, you know, any more significant mental health challenges that we may be seeing and is it an increase from previous years? Because I think that's, those are important pieces of information. And I don't know if there's any available data that we could get in the future. I certainly, you know, don't expect you to have that in front of you right now, but that is something that I would like, you know, to get a handle on because I think that the impacts of the pandemic are, you know, as we've been reading all across the country, the mental health impacts are, you know, you know, our students are facing them now, but they're going to expect it to continue to have mental health challenges for years to come. So that's something that I would like for us to monitor and keep a close tab on.
I've added that to future agenda items.
Okay, great. The other thing, so we talk a lot about student mental health, but I'm also concerned about the mental health of the adults in the building. So at some point in the future, you know, I would like to hear more about some of the programming that we may have around, you know, the mental health and wellness of the adults in the building as well. And additionally, a question that you might be able to answer today is, do we still have the hotline open for our students and families that we had put in place last year, I believe, or the year before for the anti-bullying? It's part of the anti-bullying prevention policy. And we had this hotline, which we had, Dr. Martin and I, I remember in our policy committee, we had started, and I think we actually raised it in a work session, but had talked about having a text capability so that, you know, since a lot of our students don't call and, you know, leave messages or, I mean, like to talk on the phone, they may text. So if, I don't know if anyone's able to answer that, but I would like to hear more about whether that hotline is still available for students and families.
Yes, it is. It's still available. And we certainly aren't prepared to speak more on it this evening. But yes, it is still available and it's still operable.
Okay, great. Great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Vice Chair Jordan, go ahead.
Thanks for the presentation. Thank you, Dr. Phillips, for what you continue to do and have always done as far as I can remember. And appreciate you sharing all that. I just have one question for you, Dr. Phillips. You know, as you have worked with your partners and worked with your students and all the engagement that you do with the families, what's your sense about children who are missing, being in person, families that may have some concerns about, you know, COVID? Just trying to get a sense because there's a lot of different data out there from schools across the country about, I'll just speak for myself for a lot of us in the African-American community about different concerns. I just want to know, in your social, emotional supports, is there anything that you're kind of sensing out there that may be helpful to us as we work on budgets and other supports, as was mentioned earlier?
Yes, sir. It's taken a toll on our children in our communities, such as Tidewater Gardens and Young Terrace. The boys and girls prefer to be in school. And quite frankly, for our children who have a special need, virtual learning has presented its challenges as well. And so we've spent quite a few times on the phone with families or meeting prior to, right when COVID happened, we were meeting at the, out in the parking lot or at the fast food restaurants to try to, you know, make the children understand that this was not something that was their fault and that we were still there for them, that we care for them, but life circumstances prevented us from being, you know, together right now. So yes, it's taken a toll on our boys and girls in our communities.
But thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks again for your present, your, well, presentation, but also sharing such wonderful news. And also.
I appreciate being here. Thank you.
Side of what's going on in your community. I appreciate that. Any other comments? I just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone. Okay. All right. Let's see. Moving on to our next item. We have the vaccination process update. Dr. Birdsong?
Good evening again, Madam Chair. Dr. Moore will lead this presentation for us this afternoon. Certainly, I'm able to share some data with you after he presents this information. So, Dr. Moore, please proceed.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Superintendent Birdsong and School Board members. I'm Dennis Moore, Senior Director of Student Wellness, and I will share information about the vaccination process with you. This has been a process that has developed rather quickly. At one point, they were talking about just having people fed into the registration system and then getting an appointment somewhere at some site in the relatively near future. But once we talked with public health, they decided that maybe it would be a good idea to use the school nurses that are employed by Norfolk Public Schools, train them up in the things that need to be done with different modules for vaccination and having a walkthrough with the public health nurses. So the nurses were trained so that we could have events where it was primarily dedicated to Norfolk Public Schools. So what we've done over the past, we've planned it for the past couple of weeks, but over the past three days, February first, second and third, we've had multiple, multiple, multiple people. They've registered for a vaccine and they were able to come in over the past three days and receive a vaccine for COVID-19. And when you're talking about mental health, I mean, you could just talk to some of the individuals as I've been at the site for the past couple of days. I mean, a feeling of relief just sort of washes over them as they feel like, hey, you know, I'm getting the vaccine. It may not be the end of the whole COVID thing, but at least I feel like I have some protection and that it does bring a bunch of relief to them. So the vaccination process, it's being conducted in partnership with the Norfolk Department of Public Health. In this presentation, I will review the registration, how they prepared and once they arrived for vaccination and what happened and what happened after the vaccine was administered. The Norfolk Public Department of Health will be, is supporting COVID-19 vaccination clinics for Norfolk Public School employees that responded to the MPS COVID-19 vaccination survey. So what was, a couple of weeks back, we developed a survey that was sent out to, through a blast for MPS employees that provided them with a link that they could use to register for a vaccine. If they, because it's their choice, they have the choices of, yes, I want a vaccine, no, I do not, and/or I've already had the vaccine. Because some, maybe like nurses and stuff like that may have had an opportunity to get it already. So they put together this initial three-day event for vaccinating as many MPS employees as they could that happened over the last three days, February first, second and third. The names of those that submitted a response to the survey and indicated that they wanted to receive the vaccine were given to the Norfolk Department of Public Health. So we have, the survey results would generate a spreadsheet, an Excel spreadsheet. We would turn that Excel spreadsheet over to public health and they would load that into a registration appointment system. And they were feeding them in bulk and batches. So this is, this happened very quickly. I mean, this wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot of opportunity to plan. It was, it was, here's the information. They put it in and they started sending out invitations. They were sending out invitations up until yesterday. I mean, so this is ongoing process. So once they, once they're entered into the system, they're sent an email. The email sent to the recipient and the emails opened and the information that's they needed was entered to create an account and set up an appointment with Norfolk Public Health. And the event that we've had for Norfolk Public School employees was at the Macy's, which is the Military Circle Mall. It's now empty and they've sort of repurposed it. And each day, they've had anywhere from twenty to thirty tables with Norfolk Public School nurses and Norfolk Public Health nurses and some EMT and some firefighters. But all of our nurses were trained except for a slight few, but most of them were trained. And they were either vaccinators or they were, they were runners or they were people that monitored people after they had the vaccination or they were screeners as the people walked in the door. So they had a variety of tasks that they were asked to do. So employees, once they received their email, they responded as soon as they could to get the invitation. So I'm going to sort of walk through it so you better understand how the vaccination events have gone. And we've done others as well. Lake Taylor High School has been a site for 1A. That was two Saturdays ago. STEM Academy is talking about. Booker T. Washington is doing an event this Friday for, there's church groups for sixty-five and older folks who, there were like four churches that were giving one hundred and fifty doses each. So there's about six hundred people that would be coming to Booker T. Washington this Friday. Because one of the big pushes right now, I mean, they're really pushing for school employees to get done, but they're also pushing for elderly, especially in like neighborhoods such as like, over at Berkeley Campus Stella, there's a lot of need over there. There's a lot of people that desperately need the vaccine. So they're trying to come up with specific sites. So they're doing one with Booker T. Washington for six hundred people and one at STEM for about two hundred. So that, but each time I've been to an event is gone silky smooth. It's really, it's really efficient. They get the people in, they get the people out. It works really well. So the goal, of course, is to vaccinate as many people as possible during the three-day event. The number of people that could be vaccinated during the event depended on variables such as the amount of vaccine available, the number of vaccines, vaccinators, the number, the amount of vaccine available, the number of vaccine available to administer. And when the appointments available during the three-days event are taken, those that did not get an appointment, they'll be given an opportunity to receive their vaccine on another day. So there are, we did get a lot of people in, but there are still a list of people that haven't had their vaccine yet. And we're working with public health now to develop additional times and days. And they're trying to figure out now how they want to do it, whether they want to do it as a group event or they want to do it as they feed you into the system and you could go to a number of different places across the city. But the Public Health Department is trying to manage a bunch of different requests. I mean, they're still finishing up the 1A. They got the sixty-five and older, the 1B, and then there's the group following behind them. And as you know, from seeing the news, there's issues with getting the vaccine. So that they're always trying to look at all the different variables. This is a rolling process and will continue beyond this three-day event, as I said. And as I said, as Norfolk receives additional responses through the survey, we will continue to submit the names to the Norfolk Department of Public Health. So just to talk a little bit about what happens on the day of the event. On the day of the event, it's important that those vaccinated come prepared with ID that matches up with the information that was submitted with their account, such as a driver's license and a school ID. It was suggested that those being vaccinated arrive at their scheduled time. And this worked really well for Norfolk. Couple of weeks ago, there was an incident at Virginia Beach where they had people coming in to get their vaccine, but everybody was sort of flooding. They weren't really following their time. And so they ended up with lines around the building. And I think the longest line I've seen in the number of days that I've been at these clinics in Norfolk, maybe twenty people at the most. I mean, they get them in, they approach the desk. They're doing a questionnaire and a screening and then they move on to registration. They go, maybe sit in a seat for a minute. They're put in line, they're put with a vaccinator. And then they're monitored for ten to fifteen minutes. I mean, fifteen to thirty minutes, depending on individual circumstances. So and those entering the vaccine, they're screened. Like I said, they do their temperature check. They ask them a couple of questions about their current status. Are they sick? Have they been sick? Have they had a, I was going to say shingles vaccine because that's what I'm seeing a lot of. But have they been vaccinated in the past fourteen days? Because they're not, they're not supposed to get a new vaccine if they've been vaccinated within the last fourteen days. So they're, after they pass the screening, they're given additional information. They go around the corner, they're registered. They give their ID, they pull them up off the screen, they check them off that they're here. Again, they put them in a socially-distanced line and they're invited one at a time into the vaccination area for the shot. The vaccinator asks a couple of additional questions, like really more about the allergies because I want to make sure that if they're giving somebody who has a vaccine to somebody that has allergy issues, that they're, they give them extra time to monitor them afterwards. So after the shot is given, the person vaccinated, we escort it to a recovery area and monitor for fifteen to thirty minutes as required by guidelines. Once the time has passed, the person will be allowed to leave and go about their day. Now, like I've said, I've probably been about five or six of these events. And during that whole entire time, I've only seen about two or three people that really had any kind of reaction and nobody's had a significant reaction. I mean, a bunch of people may have a little bit of a sore arm the next day. Couple may feel a little bit under the weather, but I'm not hearing significant concerns being presented by people that have received it. And I've heard from many, many people that it's a very well-oiled process. I mean, it's, public health has done a really good job of collaborating with us to get these set up and get these as efficient as they probably possibly could be. So with that being said, any questions you have, I'd be glad to answer them if I can.
Ms. Campton, go ahead.
Dr. Moore.
Yes.
Congratulations. And Dr. Birdsong, I know that she's right there, right at the top, taking care of it all. But this was fantastic. I was so excited when I heard that we were going to start getting our staff vaccinated. And I know that it must have been so much work to get it organized. Nineteen hundred people, I believe, is what I had heard.
Yeah, I think, I think in the end, I think there was actually a little over two thousand. So, yeah.
How many employees about do we have in Norfolk Public Schools?
I can share that data with you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you did say you were saying that. Okay, I'll wait on that one.
No worries. I can go ahead and share now.
Okay, and then I could do a follow-up. If that's okay with Dr. Martin. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
I tried to anticipate what would be pertinent to the school board. And so as we, you know, we administered the survey, we got the results back. And so fifty-one point three percent of all full-time staff responded or full and part-time staff responded that they wanted to participate in the process. that they wanted to participate in the process. And then we had 10.6% um, who responded that they did not want to participate in the process. And then we have about 38.1% who did not respond at all. So of course we're a little concerned about that. And as, um, Dr. Moore shared with you, it was a three-day event. And during that event, um, they were able to serve a little over 2,200 staff members. I think they reported that they would be able to do 1,900, but they did more than that. And the Norfolk Department of Public Health, they are doing a tremendous job. They are working around the clock. And so we, we certainly appreciate their partnership. And if we're looking at just overall numbers and subgroups of employees, um, our administrators, 83, and when I say administrators, that includes the building principals and, um, central office administrators, uh, 83.3% uh, again, agreed to be vaccinated, 51% of classified staff, um, 22.1% of non-classroom teachers. So that they would be, you know, your teacher specialist. Okay. Um, book who are, uh, staff who are on a teacher's contract, but not necessarily, you know, directly instructing students. 14.4% of our part-time staff responded that they, uh, would participate in the process. And then, um, our classroom teachers, 74.4% said that they are willing to participate in this process. So at this point, um, we could say that about 52.4% of all of our full-time employees should be vaccinated by the end of this, well, today, which would have been the third day of this three-day event. And so those are the data points that I have to share.
And thank you. That's just what I wanted to hear because I'm particularly excited about how high the classroom, the actual teach, classroom teachers or resource teachers, um, 75%, just about. That's impressive and certainly something that the board will be able to look at when we're looking at the, the dream that we're all looking to is to get our children back in school. This will make it so much easier to make some decisions because once we, what's the superintendent, of course, um, tells us what, what's going with it. But, uh, to know that we can bring our teachers and, and other staff members back into our school buildings safely. It makes all the difference. I'm, I know that I, I got tons. I, I had a lot of teachers, uh, texting me throughout the, the first day on Monday, um, and just what a relief it was because they're all so anxious to get back with their children. And now they feel like this is a, a real step forward into making that possible and safe. So great job for everyone. Uh, I'm really impressed. Thank you very much.
So, so in addition to that, please know that we still have, um, another group of, of, of teachers and staff to, this is a rolling process as Dr. Moore stated.
Right.
Well, not all teachers and staff participated in the, you know, the first event that we've had. And so, um, I cannot give you a timeline around when the next event will occur. And again, I know the Norfolk Department of Public Health, they're working very, um, hard to make sure that, you know, we continue to be a priority. And, and so we're, we're continuing to, uh, advocate for our employees to fill out those surveys so we can get them into the system so they can get their emails and they can register for the process.
Very impressive. And you put it together in two weeks. Wow. 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 Congratulations.
Moving mountains.
Right.
All right. Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Um, Dr. Birdsong, uh, Dr. Moore, uh, great job on, uh, the start of getting all of our employees vaccinated. Um, and also kudos to the Norfolk Department of Public Health who, uh, I know is working tirelessly. Um, I have a few questions and I appreciate the data points that you just provided, um, cause that was part of the questions that I've had. Um, but could you speak a little more so? So in planning, did we even, it sounds like we probably didn't have a whole lot of time to do this, but did we sub-prioritize, uh, teachers based on whether pre-existing conditions or, you know, what, based on our phased, you know, our phase-in process for returning, uh, to the classroom?
I see Dr. Moore. At the board at the last meeting. Yes, we did. We did prioritize our teachers in accordance with our phased-in plan and other, uh, specific characteristics. So yes, we were able to do that.
Okay. And what was the survey also disseminated to our bus drivers and?
Absolutely. 100% of the staff are able to participate in the process, part-time and full-time employees.
Great. Great. Um, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. So given, given this movement to get, you know, this is, that's a pretty good chunk of our staff that's been vaccinated and, um, I'm assuming will be, you know, receiving the second dose hopefully in the next month, you know, all contingent on supply. Um, what does, what does it mean in, you know, coupled with the new interim guidance from the state? What does it mean, uh, you know, in terms of returning our students back to the classroom? Um, we are seeing a decrease in our, you know, our health metrics are, are moving in the right direction. Um, and with vaccinations and the mitigation strategies, um, in place, um, do you foresee, you know, coming forward with a recommendation to move our students back to the classroom sooner?
So in, in accordance with the guidance, if you've had a, an opportunity to look at the guidance, um, it, it clearly states that, you know, having vaccines does not keep teachers and staff from returning to our school buildings. And so certainly we need to continue to monitor our metrics. I think it gives our teachers a greater sense of, um, security and, and safety, knowing that they've been vaccinated and their principals have been vaccinated and, and other staff members have been vaccinated. But at the end of the day, as, as noted within the guidance, it is a local decision, um, when school boards return their children to in-person instruction.
Absolutely. Which is, you know, why I'm asking that question because it is a local decision. Um, and, and as I just stated, vaccines are just part of the, uh, preventative measures, uh, that we'll be taking. But with that, coupled with the, all the other strategies that we've already talked about, um, that are in place, uh, can we, I, I guess it's something for the board to consider as well. Um, you know, can we, uh, talk about or have on a future agenda, you know, soon, you know, about returning our students to the classroom? Cause as we've heard, you know, even, um, Dr. Phillips mentioned, you know, our, our students are, uh, you know, this is really impacting them to not be in the classroom, which we're hitting on a year almost. Um, and, uh, you know, I think we do have to, uh, make some strides, uh, toward getting them back into the classroom. So, you know, I'm looking forward to some recommendations, uh, from the administration and, you know, for the board to support that effort to get our students back, uh, to school as we've, you know, based on the phased process that we've, we've outlined already. But, you know, even considering any alterations to that phased process based on, uh, the available data that, that you've collected so far.
Yep. I mean, we've, we've always said we're committed to as we learn more and as, um, this, uh, the COVID, um, environment and resources. And as all of this evolves, we're going to continue to reevaluate and, um, and revise as needed. So we'll definitely be having this conversation again. Um, so.
Yeah. And, and I do think it would be great, you know, if we could get, um, just like we've been getting the weekly updates on, uh, you know, cases, uh, among students and staff, you know, if we could get, you know, the vaccinations to, you know, to be included in that so that we have a good handle on what percentage of our employees have been vaccinated. Um, you know, I, I'd like to see us receive, uh, that information as well.
But would that change what decision we make? Would that impact our decision if we have 100% of our staff vaccinated or are we looking at the metrics?
Well, I, well, hope, hopefully what we'll see is more of the community gets vaccinated. I mean, hopefully that will correlate with improved metrics, right? So, um, um, you know, and that's, that coupled with, as I said, coupled with the mask wearing, all of those things are still, uh, at play. So, you know, and improved health conditions. I think that we should consider bringing our students back to the classroom, um, and setting some timeframe for when we're going to evaluate that again.
Um, Mr. Gordon and then Mr. Clayton.
A mute. Uh, thank you. Also like to, uh, give kudos to all the hard work out there. Just had a, um, I guess two questions. One, I was trying to write down all the numbers. So if we can, if you could email that later, I'd appreciate it. Make sure I have the numbers correct, uh, Dr. Verson that you were sharing. Thank you for that information. On the, uh, can you correct me? I, I think when we had a human resources survey, uh, that was done earlier, um, in terms of personnel that were willing to come back to the building, have you all had a chance to do any type of, I guess, cross-examination as to whether or not those that are, um, receiving vaccinations are also saying as a result of that, they would, uh, return or still be in the case that yes, I've got the vaccination, but I still don't have necessary interest at this time of wanting to return to the classroom? Have you all had a chance to do any type of assessment of that?
We haven't. I think again, when we make a determination, a, a specific timeline around when we want our children to come back from in-person instruction, I think that's when we will get the most accurate data. As you're aware, we've been administering those surveys and we've shared those results with you. But we've also shared that we don't believe until, you know, we have a specific date, whatever it is, and then we put that information out, that's when we will get the mo- most accurate data.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll just, uh, echo, I do think that as the vaccinations occur, I, I do think that as a board, we need to, um, come back and look at our current plans and how this information, other information that continues to come forward can allow us to return students, even if it, uh, you know, continues around the equity and opportunity students that we talked about. But I think the sooner that we can feel that all of the strategies that we've talked about, in addition to the, uh, metrics that we talked about, can allow for some students and willing staff to, to come back and do in-person instruction, you know, we should continue to talk about that and support it. So, thank you.
And so just, so you'll know, Mr. Jordan, um, when the chiefs met this week, um, one of the meetings that we had anyway, we did discuss adminis- administering another survey, um, sooner than later. So we can again have a better feel for how many teachers knowing that so many of them have been vaccinated is, you know, do they have a better sense of, of safety now in, in thinking about the return?
Thank you.
To school. And again, I, I firmly believe not until we say this date, this is when we're returning, you know, what, you know, or do you plan intentions of returning or not? Uh, I think that will get the most accurate data at that point.
Thank you. And.
We can administer another survey.
Thank you. Maybe we, we should consider a, a target date to help with that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. I'm glad we're having this discussion. I went back and looked at the survey results earlier today, just to, um, have it fresh in my mind. And, um, and so it'll be really interesting to, to see how that has changed. Um, and okay, let's see. Who had next? Oh, Mr. Clayton, would you like to go ahead?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Martin. Uh, Dr. Moore, um, or Dr. Birdsong, when you were doing your presentation, how many, um, what percentage of our stu-, of our staff population hadn't responded to the survey at all?
That was 38.1%.
Okay. So more than a quarter of that. And I guess, uh, Dr. Moore, Dr. Birdsong, uh, as you, I know you're working with the Health Department, um, in the vaccination process as a whole. Um, roughly, I mean, what kind of dent, I guess that they've reported out in, in the Norfolk population that we've actually vaccinated right now? You have an average?
Mr. repeat that question, please.
What the vaccination percentage looks like of our total Norfolk population right now? Do we have an idea of what that looks like?
You're talking about the city of Norfolk?
Norfolk. Is that five, 10?
Dennis Moore will likely have that. I, I don't have that specific data. Uh, Dr. Moore, are you still on the line?
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't have that specific data for the city of Norfolk. I mean, I, I mean, I know that people are, are, when they're sending out the invitations, I mean, their, their denial rate is typically like one or 2%. So people are rushing in to get it. They're really excited about getting it and they're, um, they're trying to put on as many events as they can to get it out there. But I don't, I don't know the specific data. It's changing so quickly right now. It's, it's hard to catch up.
Got it. Well, I, I know that, um, uh, I think it was released today in the news about, um, uh, that pharmacies will start to receive vaccinations as well. Um, and though, you know, I, uh, appreciate the optimism of our, my colleagues in the board in regards to a return to school early. Um, I still am a firm believer in being sure that we have a safe, secure environment. And that environment also looks like the entire city of Norfolk. Um, and looking at the, uh, you know, one of the other things that I haven't heard even mentioned was about the variants, um, of this, uh, of this virus, um, and where they stated by March will, uh, I think one of these variants will become the dominant, uh, strain of the COVID, uh, 19 piece. Uh, so I, I welcome having a conversation, but I will still, um, side on the air that we make sure that we are, I'm ensuring that everybody, um, is safe. And when I look at 30 some odd percent of our, our population, our teaching population that still has not responded, um, I think we still have a ways to go. Um, I think that we have deliberated, um, and taken in account, um, and have had, and have a solid plan in place, um, for when the positivity rate is down. And we've even moved that up. Um, but now to say that we're rushing to try to do some other things, I, I think that it's a little premature. Um, I would definitely welcome a conversation, maybe in March, uh, to kind of look at what things are looking like. Um, but I, I do not feel like it's in the best interest to put out some false hopes around things when there's so many unanswered variables right now, um, to the, the safety. Um, great that we have vaccinations going on, but there's still a lot of people who have not been vaccinated and we still have a ways to go. Thank you.
I think it should be clear, um, Mr. Clayton, thank you for sharing your perspective. I do want to just also.
This is EXP Realty and I wanted to bring you a market update and let you know what's happening for last month, January.
Thank you. Okay. I do want to reiterate to, um, to make sure that people understand that we are continuing to offer the virtual option because I know every time we talk about this, I get a lot of emails asking, you know, about the virtual option and that we have not discussed not having a virtual option at this time. And so we will be continuing that, um, as we, as we plan, you know, any transition or changes to the current, um, in transition to in-person plan. So, um, Mr. Jordan, did you still have a hand up? Okay.
I forgot one other question, uh, for, for either Dr. Birdsong or Dr. Moore. If, uh, if a staff member, um, gets vaccinated outside of the Norfolk program, let's say if they live in Virginia Beach and they somehow go to a Virginia Beach event, do you all also receive that, that data and is that included in what you shared with us?
Yes, that, that would, there was, with the survey, they can respond, they could have responded or can respond. Yes, they're going to participate. No, or they've already been vaccinated. And I can tell you that very, very few, um, have submitted information that they've already been vaccinated. I mean, very, very small numbers, like one administrator, two classified staff, 10 non-classroom teachers, three part-time staff, three classroom teachers. So it's very, very small numbers.
Okay. And, and just so I'm clear in, in response to what Mr. Clayton was asking, the 38%, that's all staff, that's not just teachers, correct?
That's all staff.
All staff. Okay.
Yes. All staff.
Yeah. And I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, I'm not trying to be overly optimistic or send, um, uh, bad messages in terms of false hope. I'm simply, uh, continuing to advocate that to the extent that we can find opportunities to provide in-person instruction, uh, for those who want it and those who need it, that we continue to have these discussions around that. And that's, that's all. So, thank you.
Yep. Ms. Bassin, did you have another question or comment?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Martin. Um, I wanted to respond to Mr. Clayton's question, which was a good one. Um, and last night, uh, Dr. Lindsay had provided an update to, uh, City Council. And a lot of these questions, um, were asked, uh, during the council meeting. And so I think you'll find, uh, that presentation and discussion informative. Uh, but one of the things that did come up was, um, and, and there's also, VDH has the vaccine dashboard. So you can see how many vaccines. So you can see how many vaccines were administered in Norfolk. But I believe that just because they were administered in Norfolk doesn't mean it was a Norfolk citizen who was vaccinated. So to your question about what percentage of Norfolk's citizens or residents were vaccinated, I think it sounds like that's a complicated, might be a, you know, might be, is more complex to get at that number. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that point. The other, the other thing is more of a comment, question, you know, speaking of the community and having our schools be, you know, pillars in the community and our neighborhoods. I wonder if the administration, if you all have been kind of thinking about ways the schools can play a more central role in, you know, helping our, you know, the broader community gain knowledge, information, and, you know, even provide access to vaccines. And I don't mean school personnel doing that. I mean, being like, like a hub because we have the families, you know, in our school division. And so how can we help the Health Department communicate to families? Or especially, you know, I am concerned about, you know, our, our students and families where English may not be their primary language, you know, how are we, how can we help? Is really, you know, what I'm, what I'm getting at and how can, you know, because we know how to enroll people. We know, you know, we are strong, we have strong human service capacity as a school division. And, you know, I think if we can think about how we can help the overall effort in getting our community members vaccinated, I think that would be worth the effort. So I just wanted to put that out there.
And to be clear, we are helping. In Dennis Moore's presentation, I, I know he shared with you that we're going to be holding a community event at Booker T. Washington on Friday, and that's solely for the Booker T. Washington community. So citizens who are sixty-five years and older, I believe, you know, that's going to be the requirement, can come and be vaccinated. So we've been working collaboratively with the Department, the Department of Public Health with that. Also with four local churches, you know, they were, they provided the names. We were able to make sure they had a location. I know a lot of our staff, you know, even though it's not directly related to our staff, they've been there to support the program. So I want to make sure that I give Dennis Moore, all of our school nurses, I want to applaud their efforts for working with the community to help and for being out there, not just to serve teachers and staff of MPS, but the larger community at, at large. So I, I, again, I just commend their efforts. And I know we have a, a lot of our own things going on with, you know, in virtual instruction and feeding children every day and on the weekends, we're doing a lot too. But I, I do need to recognize them for the hard work that they're doing. Also, on Monday of next week, we're having another community event at the Southside STEM Academy. And then again, this is a community event. It's not for Norfolk staff, it's for people that live in the community. So we are reaching out, we are helping. We had an event at Lake Taylor High School not long ago. That was on a Saturday that involved many of our staff members, our nurses who were there to help with the vaccination process. So we are helping.
Yeah, absolutely. I wasn't trying to imply that we weren't, but even in terms of registering people who may not have access to the internet or, you know, I, I was just thinking of other ways we could help. And certainly, you know, I applaud all that Dr. Moore and the Health Department is doing to, to help our community, but I, I was just thinking beyond that.
I believe the city has resources as well, you know, that can help those, those who don't have internet access and so forth to help them sign up for the vaccination. And they have a marketing campaign going on to help those citizens. But I do want to say, Dr. Burson, thank you so much for this presentation on the vaccination update. I know we've, we've all been fielding lots of questions from our community and, and everyone's really, you know, well, not, I can't speak for everyone, but, but most people I'm hearing from are so excited about, about this, you know. And I, and I know it's not an end-all, you know, cure, but it, it definitely is the light that so many of us kind of, you know, needed. And so I'm really, really appreciative of you and your staff and facilitating this so well.
Thank you. I appreciate that positive feedback.
Okay, well, on to our next item, which is six point zero three, is the presentation on the school year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two academic calendar survey.
Madam Chair Martin, Dr. Poe is going to lead us in that discussion. So, Dr. Poe, please.
Thank you, Dr. Burson. Good evening again, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the school board, and Dr. Burson. I'm here this evening to present the two calendar options for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Please know the calendar is being presented earlier than normal due to the need to have an official start date for school next year in our Synergy Student Information System, prior to being able to schedule students for next school year. Waiting just for the slide to pop up here. Thank you, Ms. Tanner. As a reminder, a regional calendar committee meets to discuss similarities for each division. Across our region, all divisions are still planning to post Labor Day start. However, there's no overall decision between divisions as to which date to start. There will be no students in school for the November elections days. All divisions build at least two bank days, and there's an attempt to align the winter and spring breaks with other divisions. And then all schools reopen the first weekday after New Year's Day. As a guide, spring break falls following Easter, when Easter is before April fifteenth. And spring break occurs before Easter when it's on or after April fifteenth. For option one, the first day with students would be September eighth. As in years past, students and staff would have Veterans Day off a half day prior to Thanksgiving, as well as Thanksgiving and the day following. This year, both options have an eight-day school break for the winter holidays, beginning on December twenty-second, with students and staff returning on January third. Option one has both a teacher work day and a professional day at the end of semester one. Students and staff would continue to have Martin Luther King Junior Day off, as well as President's Day. And spring break would be prior to Easter, since it falls on the seventeenth of April in twenty twenty-two. And the last day for students would be June seventeenth. Based on the community survey that just closed this past Monday, just over forty-eight percent of the respondents voted for option one. Slightly more than fifty-one percent of the two thousand eight hundred and eighty-three responses voted for option two. The difference with option two is the start date of September ninth for students and staff. This additional day was taken from the Professional Development Day at the end of the first semester. Comments from the survey were primarily focused on having a full two-week winter break reinstated, to have Rosh Hashanah included in the calendar instead of just saying an extended Labor Day holiday, comments of thanks for being considered of the Jewish community, to have spring break after Easter, and to move the work dated Monday in option two calendar, and then several comments of thanks for just allowing input. Inclement weather and emergency makeup days are determined based upon instructional needs and requirements at the time of the weather event or other emergency. The Commonwealth of Virginia requires all school divisions to schedule a minimum of nine hundred and ninety instructional hours per academic year. In order to be prepared for weather or emergency closures, Norfolk Public Schools includes in its schedule additional instructional time or bank time above that requirement. In general, the superintendent will follow the makeup day schedule listed on this slide, depending upon instructional needs. The first day would use the first bank day. The second would extend the September twenty-third early release. The third would be the second bank day. Then October twenty-first early release would follow. With the fifth day using the final bank day, and if needed, the sixth day would be either the February PD day or President's Day, depending on the, the calendar selected. Thank you for allowing me to present these two options to the board this evening. At this time, the administration is prepared to answer questions.
Sorry, sorry. Dr. Gabriel and then Ms. Basine.
Okay, Dr. Poe, no offense, but I really miss Deb Rock doing this presentation. So if she's listening, hi, Deb. I appreciate you presenting the options to the board. Dr. Burson, when you, on the first slide, it said regional consensus. Does that mean that as a region, the superintendents came together and all agreed that they were going to try to do the academic calendars to start after Labor Day? Meaning that other school divisions, unless they're directed by their board and in some, you know, type of action, that they were not going to be pressing forward to start the official school year prior to Labor Day?
So, yes, so there's a regional committee and, and Dr. Poe serves on that committee. And certainly during those meetings, you know, a lot of information and, and data is shared during that time. And, and at this point, we're, we're not aware that any other division within Region Two plans to start before Labor Day. If, if that was your question, is that your question?
Yes, that's my question. And then can you just talk about your decision process? Because we have had some questions before. We can technically write for a waiver to start prior to Labor Day. But as you all are thinking about the summer and the school year and what has gone on as far as academics with regard to the pandemic, what have been your thoughts with regards to the school year and providing education to the students?
So I, I believe at the, the upcoming school board meeting, as I was meeting with Dr. Martin and Mr. Jordan, we agreed that we would be bringing some information to the board around academic programming to address learning loss. And as the administration has planned for that, we, we don't need to adjust our, our calendars so that, such that we start before Labor Day without going into too much detail, because I know it's not an agenda item now. We will have a variety of robust options available for our children to address learning loss and other needs during, throughout the summer.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Basine and then Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Dr. Gabriel answered, I mean, asked one of my questions. And actually, I'll defer to Ms. Smith. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Basine. Thank you, Dr. Burson, for that explanation. You did address one of my concerns. So I'll hold off any comments that I have right now. But it, it basically, my concern was around how we were going to address the gaps that have occurred due to virtual learning or not learning in person. So I look forward to receiving that information. Thank you.
You're welcome. And we're excited to share.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes, thank you. Without going into technical details, can you all explain again the, the synergy info system piece and how that predicates everything else? And then what the, assuming that the synergy info system requirement is what it is, what's the latest that a decision on the calendar can be made based upon whatever the synergy requirement is?
So I, I'm going to address that to the best of my ability. And I know Dr. Cataldo is on, on the call too. And so he can address the more technical pieces. But in a nutshell, Mr. Jordan, right now, in, in years, previous years, we basically, we knew that we would be, when our start date would be, because it's, it usually is always the day after Labor Day. So that date is needed to, to lock in synergy. We cannot roll over until we have a start of the new school year, that date put into our system. We also cannot register students. And it's my understanding that now our IT colleagues are, are, you know, have some concerns because we're way behind in the process. Because this year, they were aware that, you know, we may need a little bit of flexibility, wasn't sure how we would, with, where, where we would stand with the calendar, what would be our start date. And so that is my understanding of why we need to move forward with making this decision so we can get our kids registered, so we don't have to manually schedule our twenty-eight thousand children. Dr. Cataldo, did I do a good job with that? Dr. Poe?
Did a great job.
Okay. Is, is there anything else you need to add to that?
Just that in order for us to register any students for next school year, we have to do something called a rollover. And that rollover, we have to have the start date for the next school year in order to do that rollover. And, and that would need to have that first date. So exactly what Dr. Burson said.
So again, I don't want to get too technical because it's outside of my area. But I just, so hypothetically, so if we set, if we did like we've done in previous years and set the start date the day after Labor Day, and then based upon the information that we receive about student performance and other changes, we decided to make adjustments. What does that, what does that do to you?
Specifically, what would happen, once those students have been scheduled, let's say we picked the, the date, as you said, right after Labor Day, students would all be registered. This first day of school would be that day after Labor Day. If we had to make that change, then they would, the SDSs, the folks in the school would actually have to go in and touch every student's classroom. Because remember, when, when the school year starts, all the teachers know who's in their class and they have all those, they have all the classrooms set up. The, someone at the school would have to change that date for every single person in order to make that aligned. Because synergy is what keep track, keeps track of all of our student data. So because it's keeping track of all that, it would tell you, you know, it, you know, absences, grades, and it has all those little cutoffs and, and times and windows where grades can be entered or things can be manually changed or not. So it just makes it very complicated and puts more work at the school.
Okay, last question, then a comment. So in, in light of the efforts that's underway to try to support the students during the pandemic and the virtual environment that we're in right now in trying to make sure where students are academically and what they might enroll in next year based upon that. So is there a, a default strategy that kind of says that where children are today that our default would be to schedule them for whatever would be their natural progression? Even as we're trying to figure out all this impact from the pandemic? Or just, I, I guess ultimately, from a, from a comment, comment perspective, if the information that Dr. Burson mentioned that we talked about receiving on the seventeenth, if we're able to receive that information and then make the calendar decision after that, I'm just trying to get a sense of, is there room for that or, or not?
We're already behind the eight ball. I've been told by my I, IT colleagues that they are really, really pressed at, at this point. And I, I know another neighboring dis-division utilizes the same system. They've already locked in their calendar and they're not going to have the same issues that we could potentially face. And so I would just, you know, again, we're going to have conversations around, you know, what the administration plans to, to do to address the learning loss. But we will not be advocating for changing the calendar or for a later start, I should say, an earlier start than what's being proposed. But of course, I know the board has the final decision.
No, I mean, really, I get that part. I think with all the conversation about potentially doing extended days or year-round schools and all of that, I just wasn't, wasn't able to get a sense that if a school, for example, or a school system decided that it wanted to do year-round schools on the current one hundred and eighty-day schedule or more days, wouldn't that then potentially have impact on the, on the calendar? Or we would just adjust if for some reason we decided to do that? That, that's what I'm just trying to get a sense of.
Mr. Jordan, there's not a school division right now in this state that, that's not scheduling high school students and other students for, for the next school year. And so we always, you know, as we, as guidance counselors are working to schedule kids, they're working in collaboration with teachers to make informed decisions and working with parents as, as well. And so we, we basically, based on a variety of data, the classroom teacher knows- And so we, we basically, um, based on a variety of data, the classroom teacher knows, likely knows what the child's next classes or set of classes will look like for the next school year. If they're in elementary or courses for middle school and high school students. So it's not done in isolation. It's not an arbitrary decision, but it takes time and effort to have these discussions, uh, for parents to get de-engaged and decide, you know, what they want their children to take, of course, based on meeting all prerequisite courses and things of that nature. It's, you know, I, I cannot explain it any other way.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting it's easy. I'm just trying to understand it for the, from the board's, board level perspective. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Basine, did you have something to add?
Yes, I do. Uh, I just wanted to get clear, uh, a clarification. So are all of the Region Two districts, are they also, is their first day of school the same?
So currently, there are only two in our area that have calendars. So Virginia Beach does a two-year calendar. So currently, their first day of school is the day after Labor Day. In Chesapeake, uh, they presented a proposed calendar to their board last week, and their first day would also be the day after Labor Day.
Okay. And we, we are taking the extra day. So the question, um, now is for us to discuss option one or option two for a vote at the business meeting. Is that correct? Correct. Okay. So, and we are, we have, um, in one case, the two days after Labor Day, uh, one or two days after Labor Day as a holiday, and that is to observe the Jewish holiday. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Um, is there, uh, you, I guess, I, I think, I think that is a great, um, idea. I think it's, um, you know, shows that, uh, we support being inclusive of, uh, but, um, we also, unless we're going to do it for other religions, you know, I guess that's, that's kind of what jumps, uh, you know, to my mind is, okay, well, what about, if we're going to do it for one, should we be doing it for others as well? And I don't know if that's something that you all have discussed, or it's based on the number of, uh, Jewish families and our workforce, uh, that's driving the decision. Uh, you know, I'd like to hear a little more about that.
So, I'm sure you recall last year, Mrs. Basine-
Yes, I do.
-that board members got a, a lot of correspondence related to this matter.
Yeah.
And so, um, when it came up time and time again, you, you, the board often reminded the administration to make sure that when we brought forth, um, a, a recommendation, that we would be thoughtful about this. And so that's what we've done.
Right, right. And I'm not opposed. I'm just raising the, the other, um, you know, other religious groups, uh, you know, that will say, well, you know, uh, what about my religion is just as important? Um, and so how do we accommodate that? Um, uh, the other, the other big piece is the Christmas.
Ms. Basine, I kind of, before you go, go on to something different, um, I'll just speak for, um, the Orthodox Christian community. Um, this has been, you know, our Pasca rotates with the, um, celestial calendar. And we always, every year, um, and let, you know, it's every, so, every so many years, the, um, Eastern and the Western Easters are on the same date. And so most years, we're always struggling with this as well. But I do want to say, I remember having this conversation, um, when this came up before, and I, I am really, you know, even though we can't accommodate all religions, especially in, in a country that has a freedom of all, all religions, um, you know, that I, I really want to make sure that, you know, I show my appreciation that we are at least taking steps to, um, be culturally sensitive when we can. And I think that, you know, that's important. And I'm a little surprised to hear, um, you know, I don't want to throw anyone under the bus, but, um, that more districts aren't doing exactly what you're, you know, exactly what we may be deciding based on, you know, I don't know what we're going to decide, but based on the conversation we had last time, um, I think that our administration is responding to that conversation. And, and so I, I think that this is a really good step for us. But, um, go ahead, Ms. Basine, with the next question.
Yeah, like I said, I, I'm not opposing, I'm not opposing it. I'm just, uh, trying to get a good understanding of the other considerations of other religious holidays, um, you know, that, um, that exist, um, in our school community. Um, so what was I saying? Um, so the other big piece is the winter break. Um, I know just as much as we've heard from families, uh, you know, that would like to see us, uh, uh, observe the Jewish holiday, we've also had a lot of feedback, um, from teachers and families about having two weeks break, um, because they really do need that break. Um, and so I would advocate for having that full two weeks, uh, for, for the, the holiday season.
Okay.
Okay. And I will share that I too had similar concerns as Mr. Jordan, you know, i- if we find ourselves, um, you know, with data as we go forward, you know, throughout the rest of this current school year, that we, uh, may need to do something different next year, you know, that we will be open to coming back and, you know, looking at the academic calendar, um, even if it is deciding that while we may not be year-round for this current school year, uh, that we may need to do something like that for the next school year. Um, so I, I do hope we'll be open for that.
Okay, good, good suggestions. Any other comments? Okay, um, our next agenda item is, um, the board member requests for consideration for future agenda items. So I'm opening the floor for suggestions. Okay, going once. All right. Well, thank you so much. This is a really wonderful.
Mr. Clayton and Ms. Basine had their hands.
Maybe a glitch. I didn't see anything. Okay, Mr. Clayton, go ahead, and then Ms. Basine.
No, don't, don't feel bad. I've been kicked off three times.
Some glitching earlier.
It's all good. Um, I, uh, you know, I, I know that we're about to, um, embark on, uh, three additional days of, um, board, uh, training and governance. Um, and I, I just, it's a lot, you know, we're sitting here and I'm glad that we're getting a lot of these things done. Um, but I, I just, I guess for future things here, I know that we have, um, a new trainer coming in for governance training with, um, uh, with AJ, and so we're really looking forward to that. Um, but tomorrow, just so people know, we, we literally were coming back at eight o'clock, um, and we're not finishing until seven o'clock tomorrow. That's eight AM, seven PM. Um, and then Friday, we're from, um, eight o'clock in the morning, 12:30, and then Saturday from eight to 12:30. So really, I guess my question, um, with this, uh, because I, I kind of brought it up about maybe a meeting or so ago about, um, adjournment times. Um, and now I see there's, uh, no time for adjournment, you know, which is, which is fine. Um, you know, you can do that. But I just, I guess with the timing, um, with the, and I know that we, maybe three months ago, um, and I, I guess what I'm also getting at too is, are all of us going to be present, um, for the, the training that's happening here? Um, and just really what consultation? Because when I looked at this schedule, um, you know, I have no problem doing the governance training, but I'm just really concerned, um, you know, I don't know if we can change anything now, but I'm just saying going forward. Um, just being considerate, um, I've been on the other side, um, as a staff member, um, but just not looking at our, you know, chiefs and all those other folks, but 47 of the people who are working behind here. Um, so I really, I pose that back to, uh, Dr. Martin and, um, and I guess, Mr. Jordan, you, you guys worked on the agendas. I know we're getting a lot done, but I just really, my concern, and I just want to stress it, you know, with full board, it's just that, you know, what consultation did you guys, um, you know, is, because I don't know, Dr. Gabriel, you, you're going to be here, right? Not be here? Because I, I, I'm, I'm just concerned.
I will not be able to participate in the conference tomorrow or Friday because I have clinical responsibilities. But I will be participating in the governance training, um, that will take place in the evening and for the most part on Saturday.
That's why, that's why it's set up the way it is. We went through several, um, versions of this, this, um, agenda for our retreat and our governance training and, um, and to try to accommodate as much, best we could to make sure that everyone can be there, particularly working around Dr. Gabriel's schedule, um, is why we, uh, she's not available until later in the day on Thursday and not at all on Friday.
With all your respect, Dr. Martin, did we, uh, did we ever give any options for other dates? I mean, was our trainer amenable to doing other dates and times?
Um, we were try, well, because we have, I mean, it's the time for our mid-year, um, retreat, and we need to get, uh, we need to start our governance training this week in order to fit the broader timeline, um, to then, you know, create our vision and then, um, and, sorry. And then be able to hand, do the work necessary to hand it off to Dr. Birdsong and her team to carry the torch with strategic planning and so forth. So, um.
I appreciate that, but my question was, did we speak with the trainer about potential of maybe finding other amenable dates and times this month, potentially? Uh, maybe even dates that we could have had, uh, Dr. Gabriel there, maybe Monday, Tuesday, or something else?
Mr. Jordan, wouldn't you like to go ahead with that?
The answer, the answer is yes. So as a board, we mapped out the, the calendar. I think we looked at this back in, uh, December. We made adjustments in September. We made, uh, every effort to follow through on the board's commitment to wanting to get the governance training going. As Dr. Martin said, we originally had a Thursday, Friday schedule. We, we adjusted, uh, to try to make sure that we had everyone there. So, uh, yes, not only have we talked to them about, uh, this schedule, but just wanted, since we're on this topic, just want to remind the board that part of our agreement with, uh, uh, with AJ and the Council of Great City Schools, uh, they will work on a, a schedule, uh, a set of deliverables that will be agreed upon between the, the council and, uh, and us. And then that will map that out, and then we will try to, uh, make sure that we adhere to that calendar and deliverable. So yes, I do know that Dr. Martin spent a lot of time, um, working on the, the calendar. I can tell you that, uh, I think we had a conversation with the, with AJ at eight o'clock Saturday morning, uh, trying to make sure that we could accommodate and work to, uh, to get this work done. So there was a great deal of effort, uh, to try to make sure that, as we heard back from the school board members and from the administration, in terms of availability, that we could make adjusted, adjustments accordingly.
Well, I, I think your answer, thank you, Mr. Jordan, for that. And that kind of just brings me to my next question. Because as a governance team, um, the administration's a part of that. So with the agenda and everything that we have being played, uh, scheduled for now, um, so we included, uh, I guess, Dr. Birdsong, you were a part of coming, coming up with all of this. The timing frame, everything we're talking about as a governance team. Mr. Jordan, Dr. Martin?
Oh, I thought you were talking to, yes. Now, we, we had a, uh, as I mentioned, we've, uh, we, we started off with the, uh, Zoom meeting with the, with the council. We, we worked on planning, we worked on agenda planning. What was different and, and what, which we apologize to Dr. Birdsong for when the final, uh, agenda came out, was that on eight o'clock on Saturday, after we had the, uh, meeting with, with AJ, then the goal was to map out the calendar, reach out to Dr. Birdsong, make sure that, um, that she was amenable to that, because we talked about from day one, trying to avoid Saturdays as much as possible. Uh, but we did have a issue with, uh, being able to get in phone call, uh, contact with the Dr. Birdsong on Saturday. And we talked about that, uh, during agenda planning on, uh, Monday, and, uh, and recognized that we need to make sure that we don't have that incident occur going forward.
I will say that we, um, the, the reason that the, the governance training, that the full administration doesn't have to be at the governance training. And so, um, they'll be with, they'll be there to support us in a retreat.
Okay.
I need to make some clarifying points, um, because I've been fully transparent with my administrative team, and, and they're on the call right now, so I don't need them to, um, leave this meeting not being, um, fully aware of what transpired. So just to clarify, you know, Mr. Jordan alluded to a telephone call. I just want to be clear, Mr. Jordan, because what you just said, people may walk away with a different meaning of that. I did not receive a telephone call, um, a- around the final schedule. Um, and so, Mr. Jordan, I, I, I know what you were thinking, but the, the way it came out, I think people can have different translations of what that, that means. Because of course, it's, it's the administration, you know, the, the school board, you know, you guys get to show up to the retreat, but we have to plan and prepare and, and make the time, and you have to make the time as well. But, you know, a lot goes into preparing these numerous presentations for the board. We're happy to do so. We're happy to engage in thoughtful commu- communication and collaboration and all of that. But we did wait and wait and wait, um, for a final agenda. I need my administrative team to know I did advocate for a Thursday, Friday retreat, as I promised that I would, um, for them, because we knew that we were going to be coming off of a long meeting tonight to, um, walk into an eight o'clock full-day retreat the next day and potentially that Friday. They have families, things to do, and I hear you about it's the governance team. Well, the governance team, whenever the governance team has generally met, the administration has always been a, a part of those conversations. And, and so, um, to kind of just say, well, you, you know, they don't really need to be there. I just, I don't think that is really fair. And I see some confused looks about that, and I'm not sure why there's some confused looks around that. And so we need to be really clear. I did not receive a ph- a phone call a- around the, the timing of, of the agenda. And I need that to be clear, because I need to be, uh, transparent with my administrative team. And they need to know that what I say to them is, is truthful, and that I'm not stringing them along, um, about various topics. And so it's important for me, for them to know what I have communicated to them is factual. So I appreciate the opportunity to share that.
So, so for clarity, I will agree with you that the call was not made. What my point was, was that we did, uh, understand about doing the retreat on Thursday and Friday. That's what we are doing on the retreat. The governance training will take place on Thursday evening, and the governance training will take place on Saturday, uh, morning, which will require the attendance of the seven board members and the superintendent. And yes, we also recognize the support that will be needed, um, from, from Channel 47 and others that we talked about. Uh, we apologize for that occurring. We did that in private. We do that in public now. So if I, in any way misrepresented that, I apologize for that. However, I was not speaking in any way about misleading your administrative team. I was just simply answering the question that was presented and clarifying what is expected on Saturday morning. So thank you.
And I, and I can appreciate that, but when it, you know, when you mentioned about the phone call, I think people could have believed that maybe I missed the telephone call, did return a telephone call. I just needed to be clear that, that wasn't the case. That's all, Mr. Jordan.
I'll be very clear.
And that was your intention. I'm not saying that at all.
I can be very clear about the telephone call. I was supposed to, I was planning to call Dr. Birdsong, but I was in the mountains, and it turns out that there was absolutely no cell service where I was. And so I rushed to send an email out, um, as soon as I got connected to Wi-Fi and was unable to make that phone call. So I felt that all, everyone needed to know that information as soon, as quickly as possible. And to send two separate emails made no sense, so I sent it to everybody, so that everyone was getting the information at the same time.
This is why we got the, the Monday email. This is the Monday email, where we got the agendas this Monday. Is that the email you're talking about?
Um, yes, it would have been that, that.
All right.
Yes, Ms. Kempson and Ms. Basine.
I'd like to add a word here too, because I asked back in January at a meeting, when we were, could I get a confirmation on the dates? Because I have surgery coming up, and so I needed to make sure that I was keeping the day clear if possible. And when I asked that, I was told that we would do the retreat on Thursday and Friday. We would do the governance. It still wasn't, that wasn't scheduled. And then the first time I heard about it was when all this just happened this week. So it's very, uh, I mean, it involves so many people, and, and, and in all the years I've been on the board, not many. But when we schedule this, we usually sit there with our calendars and everyone has input into it. And, and we got, I got, got no input. Right now, we've been sitting here for, what, five hours? I'm more exhausted. I'm trying to think to myself, how am I going to go into this governance training that I'm actually really looking forward to, after sitting from eight o'clock in the morning until that, the, and then I get a little break, which would be nice, since I haven't had dinner. It'd be nice to at least be able to have lunch tomorrow. And, and then, and then be alert to come back in for three more hours from four to seven. I don't, I'm just, I'm disappointed that this decision was made exclusive of other members of the board.
So the reason that we have such a long day tomorrow, again, is because it's very important that Dr. Gabriel, and I'm, I really don't like that you have, I have to keep saying this, is we're trying to accommodate so that she can be there. We need, we need all of our team together for governance training.
How many times did she say Monday and Tuesday is the time that works better for me? Because I always work on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I mean, those are her workdays.
The fourth and, the fourth and fifth were discussed from the beginning. And, and I'm not going to go into the details of the conversation that she and I had about her schedule.
And I'm not asking you to do that, because this is not about her. This is about the way the whole process was done. And I'm, and I'm not going to dwell on it. I'm just voicing that opinion that I hope in the future, we will not be scheduling where we have four straight days of hour after hour after hour, that we will be more considerate of everyone and everyone get a chance to do their input. This is, it's a long four days now. And there are a lot, and as Dr. Birdsong was pointing out, there's a lot of people that are involved and now have to come to this. It's, it's a lot.
Yeah. And it's very important that we go through with our governance training.
Yes, it is very important, but we've had all year.
Tried very hard to accommodate everyone. So, you know, it's not easy on us either. You think that we, we enjoy doing it? I mean, going through all of this process to try to accommodate everyone? I mean, it's, it's, it is what it is. We are here as a governance team. We have a lot of work to do. And, and sometimes we just have to do things that are more difficult and we have to make the accommodation. And, and not, I, I think we're, we're all giving up, making sacrifices to make this work. And, and no, I absolutely don't want a full day from eight o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock at night. I don't want to be here doing this on Saturday, but it is what we have to do right now.
And I'm not disagreeing. Right now, we do have to do it. But we waited all year to get the scheduling done. We could have done it last month. You know?
And then, Mr. Jordan?
It's, it's, it's been a lot of work. We, we encouraged Mr. Crabbe from council to reach out. So on November 17th, Dr. Martin sent out an email to everyone. And in the email noted that at that time, the training, the retreat and training was tentatively scheduled for Friday, February 5th and Saturday, February 6th. We asked everyone if they would hold that date on their calendar, that we would be having Mr. Crabbe follow up and have conversations with individual board members, which I believe that he did. And then we worked on trying to adjust the, the calendar. It was Saturday at about eight o'clock this past Saturday, when Dr. Martin sent out the, the email for the, for the agenda. So just wanted to share that with you. And, and we will continue to work to get, get better, to make sure that everybody is very confident that their input and schedules are important and are being considered when we do this work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Ms. Smith, did you have something to add?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to you and Mr. Jordan for all the effort you put into setting up this train, training for us. Also, although it's, you know, very long days, it is not the norm. This is definitely an exception. And I'm sure that it'll continue to be the exception. That we all know that this isn't the norm. So I just thank you guys for putting forth the work and labor into making this happen for us.
Thank you. Ms. Bassin, can you close us out?
Yes. So, so not related to this topic, but I do thank you and Mr. Jordan for the efforts. But I wanted to raise, so back to matters of the board, wanted to ask for the board's approval to ask the policy committee to, to review the, the Narcan policy. You know, a couple of years ago, a bill was passed and to allow nurses to administer Narcan. And we, the Shack had at one point had been reviewing a policy or was introduced to a policy that I do think we need to address. So with that, I just wanted to bring it, you know, follow our process, bring it forward to the board for, for approval, to take it back to the policy committee to, to work on that particular policy. I'm not hearing any objection, so.
Want to hear an objection?
What's that?
Did you want to hear? No, I'm good. Dr. Martin, just also remember, if we can get the legislative, post legislative update on the work session for next month. Thanks.
Sorry, Ms. Bassin, so unclear, you're asking about to?
Get Jana and then to give us a post update from the.
Legislative, the legislative update. But I'm going back to the Narcan, Narcan policy. Can you, can you repeat that for me just briefly?
Yes, I'm asking for the board to approve having the policy committee review the draft. There was a draft Narcan policy that was already under development. But I, you know, it's kind of with everything going on over the past year is kind of, you know, kind of, you know, was put on the back burner for now, but I want to bring it back forward for review. So I'm just, you know, following our process of bringing it to the board's attention for the policy committee, for approval that the policy committee work on that particular policy.
Okay. Was there any objection to doing that? Okay. Mr. Jordan?
I don't, I don't have an objection so much, but I've, just, just for familiarity, I think that maybe at this point, giving Dr. Birdsong and her team an opportunity to look at it and, and then schedule it from, from that point, I think might be a, a better approach. I don't know the familiarity that everybody has with, with that policy. So it might give them a chance to, to look at it first and then make a, together make a recommendation as to the best time to put it back on the, on the policy committee agenda.
Absolutely. That's, that, that's fine. I just want to make sure that it's brought forward in the parking lot of other items.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Birdsong?
I, I want to make sure I do this before your closing. So I want to make sure you're done with your agenda items.
Any other agenda items? Okay, Dr. Birdsong, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. And so I just want to share with the board. I know about a couple of months ago, we had a brief discussion with you about athletics. Well, fall athletics is about to start. And I know there wasn't an official vote by the board, but you all came to consensus around your support of that and our children. I know a lot of you have expressed concerns about social, emotional wellbeing and things of that nature, and just wanted to get a feel for your support of our school division moving forward with that.
And for clarity, it's fall sports starting.
Football, field hockey and cross country. All, all outside.
Thank you for the update.
So are you going to get consensus again? I know you did the last.
We did. I don't, any opposition to that? Because I didn't sense any opposition the last time we discussed it. Has anything changed? No? Ms. Bassin, do you have a comment?
Well, I was just, because I know there's been new recommendations around, particularly contact sports, close contact sports. So I would just, you know, I, I support maintaining sports. But just to take a, take a look at that, you know, as we plan for bringing sports back. But I'm not in opposition.
Okay. Dr. Gabriel?
Not in opposition, but just a reminder, Dr. Birdsong, to your staff, the sports physical has been revised. So that way, if a child has tested positive for COVID, they are to be cleared by their doctor before they can participate. This is very important for parents and the screeners to understand. We do not want to have a situation where we have a child on the practice and an unfortunate happens. So just please make sure that your staff are tuned to. And I know this is going to be a good opportunity for us to see how well the division, which it already has demonstrated, how well they can use mitigation strategies and still support students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Okay. All right. Okay, so today, I'm looking forward to fall sports in the, in the spring. That's great. Okay, so with that, we will adjourn the meeting.